Good evening, everyone.
Hi Dennis.
Hi Dennis.
Dennis, he's here. Hi Dennis.
Hi, you all look so much smaller on Zoom.
I didn't bring the right thing.
Yes, I do that frequently.
That's not an answer.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm on it. I don't understand.
It was. I can't hear. I had a wish to go for recording. He's boy jumping back to me. What happened to those? What happened to this? He had a test one before a few years. And I think they didn't read it because I said, Dennis, well, why?
You need a baseline.
Well, that's someone else. Very. Happened to the end where he was medical. The chief of it is, is. Right about the town. He also dated the basketball. Second, a bunch of aggressive. I wonder if I need something.
See just on the record. That's what, that's what.
Don't be like.
Let's see if it works.
What I said, just like that. Quite a day, it's fine. You're not the only game. My issue is really that I have. No.
It was.
Except it's not bothering. It's not paying back.
It's way too, that's way too.
May.
Uh, the courtroom password is, uh, it's courtroom guest and the password is courtroom capital C. And then 10543.
Thank you, Carolina.
I'll see you.
I'll see you on Zoom.
Hang it on, staying out of my office. That's another thing. I wondered if that had to do with, we were trying. I mean, what did it have to do with? Cause it was a real heavy, heavy, big trial. Being the one who was in that morning. Two months of Seattle.
Brian, we're already like Brian is here.
Brian's not here?
You know, he's late, I don't know.
Just give him a couple, you want to give him a minute?
We've been five minutes, another.
Give him a minute.
Minutes. And then if you haven't heard, we'll start.
He could be with us. Sticking back. I would straight. Came back up, what we doing? That's the story. I used it. There it goes, yeah. Three days later. Walking down the hall.
I think some of your practice would be good other option if you're not happy with anyone. Just take your. Are you sure? Okay. The other one, um.
Which is not as useful.
So it has been a night, hasn't it?
Tell me.
Her maps are on different cards. It's one of those.
Are you Brian?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lauren Dixon. Nice to meet you. Maybe I know somewhere.
I'm going through, I could plug into that.
I could.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Hundred year old first.
Wonderful.
All five of his children.
All right, then, but we can begin. Okay. Okay. Brittany?
Yep.
We are ready to begin.
Okay, if LMC is ready to go, then we're good.
So you're good, they're good.
All right.
Okay. Good evening, Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to the January fifth, fifth, twenty twenty. Meeting of the Mariner X zoning Board of Appeals. We will take public hearings first. After which we will discuss closed applications. And at the end, we will discuss the FPIS of. Four six. A four sixteen waiver. Um, before we begin, I just have a little housekeeping. Okay, special meeting to discuss administrative matters. February ninth or sixteen. They both work for me, which one works for, let's get it out of the way, so we don't forget it.
They both work for me.
I'll be away.
For the ninth.
Yeah, I would, the ninth, I'll be down, ninth.
Okay, so the ninth work for you, Greta and Angelique.
As far as I know now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, anything can happen, but, okay, so February ninth, Brittany will be the special meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so the first public hearing is one sixty six Maple Avenue. Application twenty seven AV twenty two. Is the applicant here?
Before the applicant starts, I have a disclosure to make. I owns. One sixty eight Maple Avenue. And resided there. Trying to think how many years ago.
But you don't live there now.
I don't, but it was twenty three years ago, I lived in the house next door.
I think that's.
I don't, I don't feel that that's going to color my judgment on this, but. A disclosure is a disclosure.
I, I don't think that's gonna be relevant.
Well.
It's important, disclose, disclose, that's what the law is, so. Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Frank Marcelo, I'm the architect for the owner Greg. Um.
Oh. Nice one.
So we're here this evening, uh, for, uh, front yard variance. We're proposing a few improvements to the home. Two story addition. Uh, and a small addition to the front, those additions do comply regarding floor area ratio. Lot coverage. The reason we're here is, um. I'm trying to correct the existing staircase. Uh, it's a split level on that a basement, so there are two floors. There's currently a set of stairs. Uh, that take you to the front door, which is that mid level between the second and first floors. You have to go on seven risers and then decide that you're gonna go back down. Four up, so you're kind of stuck. Running a full flight of steps regardless of your decision as to go up or down. Currently, there's very little roof overhang, there's also very small, small platform in front of. As you get to the top of the steps, which are very steep. And when you get into the home. If you could. At the first floor, you'll see the landing is three foot two and the door that swings into the landing is three feet. So it leaves you like two inches between the edge of the door and the staircase. So proposal is basically for us to. Be granted a variance so that we could, I'd like to correct the interior stairs and. Basically get you in slightly at a lower level, which is just easier to deal with the weather. Um, and provide a roof overhang so that you can get into the house. And, and have ample room and a closet to the left and the right. Regarding, so the existing house, the front yard setback is twenty feet, this house. Built at twenty three feet. As we get in the house, we've got ducks, that's issues. Really, the best solution, the only solution for that. Tampering with the entire house could be to just. Pull forward a little bit and give it my final, a little bit of relief so that it's easier to circulate through the house. So there, there's a twenty foot front yard setback. Which looks retained from the platform and the roof covering the building. We're requesting to build that, um, at twelve and a half feet. I'm sorry, adding fourteen and a half feet, which, which is basically a five and a half foot front yard request. And in the code, there's a mention of an architect's little setback, which would relate to the steps alone. And by pulling the platform out, we would need four and a half feet of additional in the staircase. Currently, the existing stairs are actually outside of. They would need a variance as well, but. So.
And there was a zoning code in nineteen seventy seven.
I don't know what happens. So they are projecting to. At the end of the day, very steep set of stairs get you the front door, you have to make a decision when you're inside. Again, another steep set of stairs, it's just very awkward and it needs to be.
Um, I was looking at, I didn't see a copy of a survey in the plans, did you submit a survey? Did I miss one?
Yeah, last page.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, and it's, and it's pretty soon, it's.
I'll pull it up.
October.
Oh, I see the origin, yeah, okay.
So one thing that I had seen from a neighboring property. Down the hill. Which I think you had included, um, pictures. Of the neighboring properties. I saw that the, the external staircase. Uh, of this other property. Did not go straight out into the yard, it went more towards that person's driveway. Have you? Is there a potential to, uh. Have those stairs go towards the driveway instead of straight out to the yard or, or not?
Well, we did look at that. I don't know if you've noticed on the front, they can't leave her the second door of this home out. So in order to. Provide stairs ninety degrees, we would actually have to pull them away from the second floor above. If I were to build the stairs. Beyond the portico, uh, I would actually need a landing and then I'd be able to. It's actually just the same.
Would that require more of a variance or create more impervious surface?
Uh, it would definitely create more impervious surface, but by pulling it away from the house, it wouldn't. Wouldn't change. And it would, it would basically, this whole project is about simply finding the circulation coming up, turning, going up. It's complex. Didn't really make much sense for circulation. I did bring some words, I didn't realize that they're straight, if you'd like to form any specific.
Can you, Brittany, do you have a, one of the?
This is the side elevating.
Thank you, Lord.
So this, this.
Bring it up for you.
Uh, A two O one.
A two O one?
Yes.
That says, didn't, didn't that say exactly, the one that says existing, was that proposed?
Not existing, that's proposed.
Okay.
Sorry, I was muted.
Oh, obviously, there'll be always. So are you gonna step into the ground floor or are you gonna step into the second floor?
So you're, you're going to step, uh, up three steps.
Into the ground floor.
You're bait, you're, you'll still be two steps above the ground floor because I'm trying to avoid changing. The existing cutout of the stairs, I'm able to come in. Decide to go down, you go down two steps and you're on the first floor, because there is an ovation and for you to go up the full flight.
And the full flight is inside.
And we, and you can see in the front, we've eliminated a long run up. And if you look at the photo. Right. You, you can see where the stairs were built are very steep. I mean, to, to pull those stairs down and just build compliant stairs, I need to come to this meeting. Even just to replace what's there, I mean, it's needless. Otherwise, there's a, beyond what the building phone would come in. And the fact that the, the house was built so close to the front property line is really the reason why I'm here.
But it's also, it, it's kind of on a unique place. On the street in the fact that the street. Basically takes a, a, a right turn, you know, you, you have a, a, a pretty steep slope. Uh, you know, uh, which starts in front of the house and then it. And then it curves to the right, it's a one-way street, correct? So in terms of where the house is oriented. You know, it probably had something to do with, uh, uh, the nature of the parcel.
Does anybody else have any questions? No. Uh, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Nope, okay, board member? Want to close, anything else you want?
I have, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So there is that presumably pre-existing non-conform. Condition for the, for the, for the stairs?
Yeah, it is, whatever there is now is. Well, no, it says that the front yard is twenty three feet, the required yard is twenty feet, so it's a complying condition.
No, no, the.
Or not the stairs.
Not the stairs, the architects are figuring right.
Which you'll see on Dan Merritt's survey. I think if they.
Right, the architectural feature problem.
So was there a search to see whether there was any, any, um. Any request, any application for variance for, for those?
There hasn't, I mean. Yeah, I've been doing work in the village for like. Seventeen feet architectural features, if I'm not mistaken, it's not something that's been around very long. Then their. General rule of thumb, anything within two or three feet from the ground masonry. Many municipalities don't even include that in setback typically. But it is addressed with the architectural feature setback. So I'm looking at what's there in today's vote against what we're building. But I believe that's. Part of. That might have been. Added in. Was it four or five years ago? Code depressed several other changes.
Seeing the adoption of this requirement for the setback on the architectural feature post-stated construction.
I, I believe so, I don't recall the seventeen.
And currently, it's, what did you say, fourteen four?
So currently it's fourteen.
Fourteen.
So you're reducing it?
No, not.
Well, this says that the front yard is gonna be fourteen.
What's confusing is.
It's the architectural features.
I'm not looking at the architectural. The architect, oh, you're increasing it by two feet.
Right, right.
Okay. Um, it was a code, the code was adopted at least by twenty ten, I don't know whether it was adopted before that or not. But it was in effect that we said the twenty ten. Okay. You know, we've had this issue before, if you remember, one of the windows on something, what was outside the window and the whole issue of whether. The landing outside the window was. A problem because it was in the rear yard or the side yard or not, do you remember that?
Not specifically, no.
We had the question of whether it was a, you know, your.
It was on a stubble.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. He did it right, right.
But it was the same, it was the same sort of issue, something at grade, a paved area at grade. And he didn't, the applicant didn't think it should be. Accounted. As a, as a, you know, as a, as a, an obstruction in the side yard because it was at grade, although it was not quite at grade and. But it was the same kind of issue that, that I think is. I just, with respect to that question. Any, any other thing else, Greta? Nope. Okay. Uh, we should, anything else anybody needs, otherwise ready to close?
There's other, other alternatives and it does not seem to be for good reason, so.
All right, uh, motion to close. If someone wanted to make a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Um, Greta? Yes. Dave?
Yeah.
Angelique?
Yes.
And.
Yes.
Brian, yes, I vote yes as well, so this is closed. Uh, we will not discuss it tonight, I can tell you that for certainty. Um, we'll get to it next week.
Next.
I don't mean next week, I mean next month, sorry, yes.
Can't have these meetings every week.
Next month, yes, definitely not. I'm sorry.
I think the applicants would like it, but.
No.
Not us.
Uh, the next ac- application is three seventy Mariner X Avenue, twenty one SP twenty two.
Members of the zoning board. I apologize, I lost my voice over New Year's, I'm very stubborn and burning. Good to see you again and Happy New Year. Uh, if I remember correctly, last time. Not have to speak too much, and I may hold you do that, but just a little recap.
No.
No recap?
No recap. We want to move this and unless there's something new, you have to tell us. We, this is, that's what I tried to explain last week. Anybody that we didn't have any questions left, we had to have a public hearing because of the timing. And so it was gonna be open. But unless there's something new you want to, I mean, I'm not gonna prevent you from speaking. I'm, I'm saying we don't need to hear anything that you told us. Last week.
Okay, so we, we submitted the, that small submission this week, which had the LLC members that we, Greta requested.
Yeah.
So that's the new information. Um, you know, and we had asked. Given that the organization, uh, significant section, proposed operating hours since their initial application. Um, there's no outdoor seating, um, for pre and post dinner establishment. Um, we are asking for the special permit here in the weekday hours. Till one AM or, or something that would or is concerned with. Uh, we could be amended to this shorter duration of special permit term and. There was a trial period that the zoning board, um, felt more comfortable giving so that we could come back before you, like, get reevaluated. Um, to show there were no incidents, uh, the applicants with the neighbor, uh, so.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of good questions. Um, is there, there's an apartment above?
No, so there, there is office space above it, there was a former, um, former apartment, is no longer occupied as such.
Okay.
Yeah, and the owner of the building is here tonight as well, so he can answer any of those questions.
This has been vacant, this restaurant has not been operated since about thirty, over thirty years. Well, it was, no, it, it has been, it wasn't operating. Over thirty years, because one of the first, about thirty five years ago, I actually, when I first went on the board, I actually asked. The mayor at the time. And I said, what is this place? Because I would look inside. And you would basically see the tables and the checkerboard things. And the cash register, which I really thought was intriguing, it was one of those old ones. But it was, it's still there? All right, well, anyway, but it was never used and I said, and I love the framework, it reminded me of a place where I used to live. But, uh.
They're getting rid of that, the pretty, um, if you didn't notice that, they're getting rid of it.
Are there any requirements?
Is there sprinklers?
Got up from their tables and walked out.
Are there sprinklers there?
No.
And do they have to be put in now?
It's not required. My name is. And there's no. There's no requirement for sprinklers?
In a commercial area though.
As far as I know.
Dennis?
I spoke to Dennis.
He should be here.
Yeah, see you there?
He was here, yeah. You're muted, Dennis.
Yeah, Carolina and our both on.
Dennis to Carolina.
Let me just get her.
Neither of them.
You wouldn't get a building permit if it was required, anyway.
Right, but since they asked the question, let's find out.
I know.
Find the answer.
Well, I just think, I don't know, I would imagine of many items that have been required by the code. And by state law and otherwise, whether it's for, um. Disabilities or otherwise. I mean, this, this property hasn't been, it's been. Inert, just statement. I mean, it's. For a long time. It, it's certainly not where it worn down from use.
At least the downstairs, um.
All right, well, I don't know if we'll get an answer for you, but.
What, I just need some clarification on something, because I, I, I like to start by saying, what is it? But. It seems like when I saw the tables were movable in this, is this to be for? It looked like, uh, more of a, for dancing or for, um. I don't know, some kind of a cabaret or disco as opposed to a restaurant. And so I'm just not clear on the use and then. That combined with the hours that you originally sought, let me to question, what is the purpose and the use of this? Opposed to be.
So those are, those are good questions, the use is, um. A appetizer and happy hour, post dinner, drink facility, so kind of like a barbies. Um, so that the hours are requested as such to kind of reflect that use, pre dinner, post dinner. Uh, there's no dance for proposed, there's no live music proposed. Um, there might be, guests will be permitted to, to dance at their seats, but there's no, the principal use.
On their seats?
No. I mean, at least he is here, I'll, I'll let him speak in a few minutes with, um, the applicant. But the idea is, um, like I said, pre and post dinner, there, the principal operation, the principal use is going to be the restaurant. And, um, the associated appetizer.
Restaurant, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I thought you said it's not gonna be for regular meals, it's gonna be for appetizers.
Like, um, like, um, milk and cookies or, uh, barbies, right, like, there are small plates. But the point of the. But the point of the restaurant is not a sit down, five person.
Right, so, and your, your plans indicate that they're not fixed seats. And their, their, their tables and the seats are. Relocatable. Or can move.
Uh, this is how this came. So I'm sorry, can I hear your question again?
Yes, you can, um, what is this going to be? But that was answered. Um, my question is, the seating is not supposed to be fixed according to what I've read. So it's movable seating, so the tables can be moved aside and etc.
No, no, absolutely. It's, it's like, you know, it's not the bench seating, absolutely yes, but it's. Uh, there's no proposal for, for dancing or opening space for dancing.
No tables.
So when you say without fixed seats, you mean the seats can be moved?
Possibly, yes, like, you know, have been, and you know, able to move the tables and chairs, but it's, it's not proposed to be moved or open space for dancing.
I think it's just proposed to be moved so that a, a table or four could be combined with another table or four to bring space.
Or merged with other tables. Make it.
See, but then what is, what is the fixture?
Fixed seating is when it's attached to the floor, then it's fixed. This is not attached to the floor. A booth is fixed seating.
Right, but I think Dave's line of questioning is very reasonable because there is a lot of places out there that at a certain point in the night. Uh, would move tables to create a dance floor. Uh, I think that we asked you about that last week. And what was your answer?
There's no dance floor, we're not proposing anything or we're not creating stage. You require to have a, a license, which was, you know, weird to me because I have, uh. A similar concept, uh. Different location in New Rochelle since, uh, October twenty seventeen. So this, this kind of project, New Rochelle doesn't require. Uh, even in my application for the building department in summertime. I, uh, mentioned that it's not going to be dancing, there's no proposal of dancing or stage for dancing. And they. They requested for me to apply for capital license, license no matter what. So that's why we submit the application for capital license as well, but that's not the purpose of, you know. No, we need a capital license for dancing purposes. Does, I believe, you know, requirements for village of Maranick only, I believe, so.
Nate, you're going to have, is there going to be music there? Live music, recorded music?
Which we do same way in New Rochelle as well, Sunday through Thursday. Uh, you know, starting from four o'clock, five o'clock, happy hour. Uh, pretty low, you know, towards the night, a little more, you know. After dinner, post dinner. Uh, we do also DJ Friday and Saturday, or sometimes Saturday alone.
Now, when you have a DJ, will the tables also still be there in their places?
Yes. What we do, for example, in a New Rochelle location, we discussed this, uh, you know, uh, last week as well, I would like to mention. Again, uh, like dancing wise, okay. Uh, when we have a DJ, how come people will not dance? Yes, people still can dance, you know, they can stand up in their chair, you know, table and dance. But, uh, you know, that doesn't mean that, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna jump on a table or leave the space. Yeah, so.
Yeah, is there wait service or?
Yes. Art vendors, servers. Kitchen staff.
So if someone's dancing next to somebody else, they can be sitting and ordering and someone else can be dancing next to them. I'm just trying to understand that.
The, the, the model that people aren't going to be just dancing around. Um, the, the business models that people are just there for after dinner or pre dinner drinks. If there is a, a DJ playing music, um, that the intent of that isn't to have everybody dancing. Because there is, there is wait staff, ta- table service.
And the kitchen is, the kitchens. Is there?
I heard back from Carolina, the fire sprinklers, it'll be dependent. It's sometimes required in commercial depending on the space and other items. So they'll be under review for that once it gets to the building department.
Thank you.
You, 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 I know you're changing the front, so it will be. Would that be glass?
True, uh, it's, it's gonna be aluminum frame with a double pane insulated glass, uh, which required by, uh, twenty twenty, uh, health code. Uh, Westchester County Health Department. Then we will replace this door from.
They're openable though?
It's slideable, uh, uh, the windows, you know, if necessary, we can slide it open and.
Is the plan to keep them open at all or not? What is your attempt?
The plan is to, to keep them open and to close them, um, by, by nine or, or ten PM. The quiet hours in accordance with the village code.
And, and what, the time do you plan to have the DJs there? Or DJ, I don't know.
Ten, ten PM, ten PM to, uh, one o'clock, basically what we do, like, you know. Uh, we do half an hour, you know, before we close it, we do, you know, last call, twelve, ten PM to twelve thirty. It'd be closing, you know, if you're shutting it down at one AM, twelve thirty, ten to twelve thirty.
As a reminder, all, all operations will cease by one AM. So it's not a situation where the kitchen will close, everybody will be out on one AM.
Later than most during the village.
No, it's been a bunch of them that are now twelve thirty, when we. On that Friday and Saturday, yes.
The weekend.
Friday and Saturday. I understand that.
Yeah, this is, they're talking about every night.
Friday, Saturday, so for that question.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a different question, but the Friday, Saturday are consistent. Since it was a public hearing, is there anybody from the public who would speak on this? No. Anything else, Dave? Remember, we had a public hearing on the, all these.
I know you did, yeah. What's the capacity?
Thirty eight seats.
Wow, artists, like thirty eight dining room plus tenant to bond?
Yes.
Yes.
And so what's the, so if more people come and they're going to stand behind the bar and stand around, is there a maximum at all that you have?
I, uh, I believe that you, uh. You fancy, uh, by, uh, the building department was seventy something, seventy something max capacity.
That would include staff too, correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
How many people are typically going to be working?
At the same time, we were proposing six.
There's no apartments directly above, this is going to be an office, correct, right above?
Used to be apartment, yes.
I understand, but, but you're not going to be using it for that, correct?
I'm sorry.
What is it going to be used for? Will it be used in connection with the, with the operation here or will it be separate? Are you renting that as well?
No, he's only renting the first floor, but the, the property owner can speak to another person.
The office space only.
Office space only, so it will not be used in the evening? At night?
Somebody could use it.
They could use it in the office.
Right. But one of the concerns, I remember the, I believe it was the police chief noted that there was a question about the. Number of people that, that, I'm sorry, about the apartments and the people who live there at night. Not above you, but next to you.
There is no apartment next to us.
Nothing next to you at all? Where's the closest apartments?
Uh, it, uh.
I think the next building?
Like, no, next building is the, uh. Next one is Mexican, which had no apartment upstairs. And the other side was, uh, on the, uh, east side said, uh. There used to be a kitchen, a gift shop. The most part.
No apartment above that.
Anybody else have anything further? Um, what would you like to do? Close? Somebody want to make a motion to close?
Motion close.
Oh, there's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
Okay, Greta.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Dave?
Yeah.
Danny voting. So yes. Brian?
Yes, it took me a while.
Yeah, that's why I had, and I vote yes, all right, so this is closed, we will not get to it this week. This, by today is what I mean. Make it clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next application is twenty five S P twenty two, eight oh five Maranick Avenue.
Were we waiting on anything for this? Were we just?
That's the CBS.
No, CBS, we were not waiting on anything.
We're not waiting on anything.
We weren't waiting on anything, um, so, um, and do you have anything new to tell us?
I do not, no.
Thank you. Uh, anybody on the board want to have any follow up questions or anything from? No? Okay, is there a motion to close? Oh, is there anybody from the public who wishes to address this? Okay, um, any motion to close?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Angelique. You vote yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I vote yes, this is closed, you know, we're not this week, next week. I mean, it's conceivable, we will discuss something depending on what time it is, but we're not voting today. Okay, next application is twenty six S V twenty two, ten forty three West Boston Post Road. Thank you. Do you have new materials?
We do, we have a new, uh.
Right, we have new, new, new drawings. Is the applicant here? I guess not.
That's good.
Um. Just surprised.
I think they were scraping to find somebody last.
I know, they. But we, you didn't hear anything, Brittany, from them.
No, I advise them that there, being that they were submitted something new, there may be questions, they may want to, you know. Be there to answer them, so.
You know what, I will adjourn that, let's adjourn this till later, till the end of the public hearings. So we'll, we'll, um. Deal with this later in case the applicant shows up.
Okay.
All right, the next application is eighteen A V twenty two, five seventy two Van Rams.
Nothing new came in for this either.
To the hotel for the applicant. Uh, we, after the last meeting, we're in touch with both neighbors who, um. Presented and, and had comments at last week's meeting. Uh, the stormwater plans, the civil engineering plans and the, um, flood storage analysis were provided. I believe, um, one of the, the neighbors, um, incident is through tonight and I'm sure he can. And the applicant doesn't have any new information for the record, do you know?
Um, anybody on the board have any follow up or anything? Dave, do you have anything?
No, no.
Okay, is there a motion to close?
You have to open it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Um, anybody from the public wish to address this? Okay, motion to close. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, Greta. Dave?
Yes.
And Lee. Brian and I vote yes, so this is closed as well, not, no decision this week, don't know if we'll discuss it. Okay, um. The next item is application twenty two A V twenty two, three fifty Ward Avenue. I know there was new information and we did have.
Yeah, that's. Which is. We, uh, the conclusion last year. Uh, we've requested that we amend the application to reflect. Instead of we were, were additionally dealing with the forty five foot upper between the C two and the. R two, uh, and the, the, the intent of keeping the property side, uh, separated. And the application, uh, by the architect was amended to reflect the seventy point five variance requested for the. Side yard that is adjacent to the river, uh, the river passing with being. Forty feet wide, seventeen point five plus three point five that exists. That result will be. The, uh, at this point, we would see the variance.
Okay. Because it was checked on here, appeal, what you newly submitted, it says appeal or variance. So that's why I wanted to see, make sure what I knew which was.
Yeah, and I think that's the clearer, cleanest methodology. We now know the length, width of the river, we now know what the setback is in the middle of the river. We now know the, uh, what's, what is required to, uh, allow this to go forward.
Um. One of, somebody who's, um, we, you know, we got a comment from somebody in the public who said there are four apartments, it's a four unit building. No.
I did read that, I just got it, as I was, uh, on my way over, I read it. If you look at the building card. Which is, is three or four pages down, the building card says three, it's crossed out at one point, it says three fifty and three fifty two.
Right.
So it references both. At locations, and then if you read further, one of the earlier notes says three fifty, single family, three fifty two. Three families, so. Yes, we've, we've discussed this at length, but I did see that, I don't think it. It lends anything to the discussion, aside from saying there is a building card there, uh, that does reflect a history here. Confirming the history is a single family house for a long period of time. It will remain a single family house.
Anybody else have any? Questions?
Well, there's. Also a comment from the public about the parking spaces. Did you see, did you see that?
And also, we are asking for the one parking space variance. That when we arrived at the six point five required, uh, rolling up to seven. Uh, and that's where we are, uh, for that, and, and that's previously incidentally. So yes, we, we did address that also.
The, the issue, Greta, the last time is it's a non-conforming use, it would be non-conforming existing parking, so the only parking space. So whether it's zero, even if it was zero parking spaces that they had, it's non-conforming. So it's only if they're adding one bedroom, so they need the, or two bedrooms, whatever the ready, they need the parking space as required to buy a new bedroom.
Comes by a half of a space and rounded up to one, so it's necessarily.
Right.
Well, I just want to just. What this, um. A member of the public said, he said. And, so you can, you can address it. Given the configuration of the lot, potentially four of the six parking spaces would be inaccessible. What's your response?
That's not accurate. If the driveway, the two are in garage, two are on the side, and there's two in the driveway, so they're accessible, they're movable. Uh, they're available and they're, and they're there. You know, we, when we originally looked at this. If you just took three fifty in and of itself, which is, which this application is for, and where the change is made. It would require no variance department. However, we, a discussion with the board, we added in the three fifty two. Ran through those numbers and came up with, uh, the three fifty two really being the requirement. Because if you leave three fifty by itself, there is no variance required. So adding in the three fifty two as it is on the same tax lot, but there's no changes being made to three fifty two. So by adding the point five on the, on the two bedrooms that are in three fifty, go up to six point five and get seven. Yeah, so.
So, so all, all parking spaces would be accessible at any one time, you wouldn't have to move.
But remember that, that these parking spaces are.
Okay.
Which is really where the application was sitting. The three fifty two have permits through the village, and I reviewed that. The three fifty-two have permits through the village, and I reviewed that process, they paid for the ten dollars. A month. They send us a year, which is there, and they have purpose apartment.
Okay.
There is no physical space on three fifty-two with that building, but built, whenever it was built.
Right. But, but the answer is yes, all parking spaces are accessible.
Anything else, Greta?
No.
And, anybody else? Dave, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to close? Second, Brian?
Sure, I will second.
Okay, Greta, Dave.
Yes. Yes.
And Lee.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so this is closed, not today, maybe discussed.
Next.
But, otherwise, we'll probably, definitely be discussed next.
As a matter of word, are you?
Next month, and I, I keep saying it, but you're right, definitely not next week. What it feels like, that's what it feels like.
As a matter of procedure, are your discussions in public, are they open?
They are public, all discussions are open to the public, but we don't take a public comment.
There's no comment, and do you render a decision at the end of your discussion?
If we discuss today, we will not be deciding today. Next week, we may or may not render a decision, and, uh, next month, we may or may not render a decision at the end of that. Generally, what happens, the normal process is, we discuss, we conclude how we wanna proceed, we direct counsel to draft a resolution, and then we vote at the next meeting. So it is possible we could vote next month, but sometimes it doesn't happen until the month after that.
I'll see you next week, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, okay.
You know, my question will become, um, this is a big problem, at least being if we're sure, I think, Martin Brothers, I think, or the.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, last week we took it because you were, it was, we, we were expected to have, you know, a hearing and a lot of discussion this week, which is doing it the normal.
Not a, I just want to be a texture client, so.
No, no, that's. Okay, the next application is four twelve. Right, yes, four twelve Monroe Avenue, twenty-three A V twenty-two.
Good evening, Peter Katizo, Katizo Engineering, uh, representing. There's nothing new since last week. Uh, unless there's any, uh, from the board.
Anybody from the board have any?
What's the?
Questions, comments?
This is Monroe.
Four twelve Monroe Avenue.
This is a big one on the bottom of, um.
Yeah.
Then one.
Yeah. But it's also got the same.
Nothing?
No, sort of the, I think the site visits the property too.
Dave?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who wish to address this application? Okay. In that case, somebody wanna make a motion to close? There are second?
A second.
Okay, Angelique?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
I vote yes, this is closed.
Thank you, next month.
Next month.
Or the month that.
Alright, I go back.
Well, hold on one second. There's no, uh, requirement for the applicant to.
No, the applicant doesn't have to be here.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
It's a closed process.
You can just watch it on, on.
That's what I.
Lot more comfortable, cup of coffee.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you so much.
Going back to twenty-six S V twenty-two, ten forty-three West Boston Post Road. Nobody has shown up, and Brittany, you haven't heard anything.
No.
Okay, uh, we have, so we got a new submitted of the drawing. Board members, do you have any questions? Because we have to decide what we're gonna do. If nobody has any questions, then we can close it without the applicant being here. If anyone has, has any questions, then we're not gonna close it. So. Board members, do you have any question? Are you gonna have questions, like, from Mike? Seems to me we will, but.
I, I went past the property and, um, I looked at the neighbors as well. Uh, and it seems like they're being very clear as to what they want to do, how much of a sign they wanna put, what of a change it is, and, uh, you know, where it's gonna be located, so. I don't think I need any more information from them, I think it's pretty clear as to what they want to do, and then we're just gonna have to deliberate on it.
Yeah, they spoke last time.
Okay, do they want, with a submission, a new submission?
They didn't show up, so the question is, we can close it without them if they're not here, or we can, um, adjourn it. Uh, and it is, then it was clear on this drawing that it's the same size essentially in area as the prior sign. Different dimensions, but clearly the same size.
Pretty much our only question.
Yeah, that's all we were really concerned about. And what it was gonna look like, the lights and.
Right, yeah, they answered on.
Yeah, we did have questions about the sign, because what they gave us this time was they showed us what the sign
Would look like.
Would look like, and the question, I remember now the question that I had, and I forgot, I didn't have it.
I, I remember your question, your question was whether or not if you combine this with the sign on the storefront.
Do you need a different, another variant? So the question, Lori, is this. So the village code has a sign limit for, uh, signs on a building. The question is, so we have, there is a sign, they are proposing a sign on the building, which obviously presumably complies, so they're not coming for variance from that. My question was, if you take the dimensions of the sign on the building, do you add to those dimensions this? In other words, if I have a, a, a sign that is ten square feet on the building, and the code allows five, fifteen square feet of signs, and now they're proposing another ten square feet of signs, do I add ten and ten, and now they need a variance for total size of signs? Or does this not count because it doesn't go into that because it's a separate, non-building side? It would, it would, uh, according to my recollection of the code, and you know, it's been a few years, it would be this, the sign limit has to do with the signs on the building. Um, it has to do with visibility. Can have more on the facade of the building for safety purposes, it has to be, things inside have to be visible. So this is a sign that's not, it's freestanding, so it does not need a variance for total sign. Okay, that was my question that I had last, that, that, that I, that I wondered about last time and, and, um, did not remember to, probably, okay, but you should answer it, so then we're good. Okay, does anybody else have anything, and if not, um, do you wanna close it? We have nothing that we wanna ask the applicant.
I would motion to close.
Fine, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, Greta?
Yes.
Dave?
Yeah.
Angelique? Brian?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, this is closed.
And Robin, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven closed in an hour.
Robin, I think that's really unbelievable.
I think that's a record.
Amazing.
Uh, is Mamaroneck social open? Maybe we could pop down there for some appetizers. But we still have a few more things to do.
Okay.
Okay, um. It takes some time. Okay, um. Okay, now we have our closed application. Okay, so let us start with three oh eight Mamaroneck Barqueela. We have a draft resolution, if I will pull up my.
I brought them in hard copy, in case you wanted to make revisions, I can put them right on here, and then we'll be able to word process.
So, um, so, okay. On the notes on it. Alright, so I have, um. I have, um, okay, do you wanna, so the first, do you put, is that, is that it? Yes, that's Barqueela. Alright, it says that the current special use permit was granted July sixth, twenty twenty-two, is that right? That seems too recent, I don't remember it being that recent.
Um.
Does anybody, I know they wanted to change the hours, but I don't remember it being that, I mean, that would have been. It's too recent, that may be when they submitted this, but if it was July twenty-two, they wouldn't be back, this would be right away.
Well, uh, I think that there was, um, what it happened was, I think they had an original one, and then I think they asked for more hours, but that, that resolution was never put in place. Uh, Brittany, did you have?
Yeah, I have it, I think. Yeah, we finally, no, it was never finalized, so it finally was finalized, um, it happened during COVID. Yeah, there was.
Oh, that's right, that was probably granted it before that, but it didn't actually get.
Right, so it was in practical use, but it wasn't on, on paper, so I guess he's just trying to follow the.
New page four. Right, they applied in twenty twenty.
Let me see if I can find it. Yeah, the original was expiring while he was going for the extension of hours, he was also extending it as well. Let me see if I can find that one, I think it's twenty twenty?
Yeah, see, that's what I was looking at.
Right, and it expired as of last November, I believe.
Yeah, but that's the price, like, we don't, we don't mind, we, you know.
This is twenty twenty, November fifth, twenty twenty was to operate a new restaurant in an existing restaurant space, so I believe this was the original, November fifth, twenty twenty.
Right, but that wouldn't have expired until, what did we say, the term? Oh, it was two years, right, it's starting in twenty twenty, then there was the pandemic, and then there was, he came in late, I do remember now.
I don't, I don't know that he came in late, what happened was, he came before.
He came in early for the request of the hours, yeah.
According to this, it was, uh, uh, he came. You granted the last variance that was, that was granted, was November fourth, twenty twenty-one.
No, um.
Yeah, it says the special permit is granted here and shall be valid for initial probationary period of two years, so he was set to expire this past November twenty twenty-two, but he had already applied for the extension of the hours, and then they changed it over and said, we're also requesting the extension of the, the renewal of the special permit.
Well, I, yes, but that's not my point, my point is, did we grant him?
You understand, they've granted in July, that's.
Why would we have granted it to him in July if he was applying, and did we do that? I didn't remember.
And here, here's, here's what happened. He, he came, he wanted an extension of hours, but there were, there was issues with, with the business that needed to be cleared up with, I believe, the Liquor Authority.
Right.
So it started to delay things, and then we said, look, your renewal is up. Uh, your original permit is up in November, you better just come back and ask for, um, you know, a, 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 a new thing altogether.
It doesn't make sense because it hasn't expired, I mean, he had plenty of time.
Yeah, I don't remember it officializing that it was actually granted, it was herself in conjunction with, and he wasn't, he wasn't in trouble for the fact that he was actively working on it.
Exactly, that's why I don't remember this happening.
Yeah, I don't think it was actually granted.
Yes, that's my point, I didn't remember this happening. Um, so we need to check that, we need to see if we can check that, because.
Well, Brittany, what was the problem? Like, they couldn't find the original permit?
No, that was more so the hours, they wanted to find what was, he had an extension request a year after, in November twenty twenty-one, that was the one we were unable to find. It was, he had already had a request for extending the hours a year after opening.
Right.
So that was the one that was M I A, because there was a glitch in change of staff and everything, and we found that one.
I'd see, this is.
Okay, okay.
We wouldn't have, this doesn't make any sense, there's something wrong with this date of July twenty twenty-two, could be the, and it's.
I can go back to my notes too, that was an extra meeting, I don't have it with me, but I can go back and double-check the notes of that meeting and see if it says anything.
Just so that we get it right, so I, so that has to be correctly.
I'll check that.
Okay, um. Now, the hours, oh, that was what he wanted to do, and then it came back, so then, um, then it said, whereas the applicant previously applied to this board seeking, there's some grammar, the problem with that sentence, seeking extend hours.
Extended.
Extended.
But he didn't seeking extend, seeking extended hours, right? That included, no, see, it says seeking extended hours that included a request. That, again, doesn't matter, that's what I'm saying, this paragraph, this little paragraph doesn't make sense, so. The applicant previously applied to the board seeking to extend, so just cross off everything, seeking to extend the hours of operation.
What he came in for was to seek an extension to the term of, because it was about to expire, isn't it?
No, no, no.
No.
This is about the hours, okay. Seeking to extend the hours to, two A M, seven, this is what he came for, first he came.
Yeah, it's just language.
So I took out extend hours that included a request.
Right.
Correct.
And it just says, apply to this board seeking to extend the hours.
Yeah.
Yes.
Got it, right. So it previously did, and then it was, where based on the, this. Um. So, they had. And then on the next one, it's just, just like, uh, so then.
Language on that.
We're on, I don't have anything on, you're the next one, if you do, go ahead.
Which is, which, I'm just, which?
The one that has Sunday through Thursday, based on this request.
The fourth, whereas clause.
Yes, and then the word ceases.
Yeah, well, I have something on that one. The S has to come off, and I also, I would say, instead of service shall cease honor before ten thirty P M, and we say, must, patrons must be out, I think it's, and no patron shall remain in the premises.
So service shall cease by ten thirty P M. And patrons.
Instead of, must be out, I, I would just say that, and no patron shall remain in the premises.
Okay, after eleven P M.
Yeah. And then you do the same. Something about the must be out.
No, you're right.
You gotta be out of here.
Wouldn't be passed out.
And then they can stay. Cause then they're out.
Then they'd have to carry out.
Exactly.
No patron shall remain.
Okay, no pay, shall remain.
In the premises.
In the premises. After eleven P M, got it, the doors and windows that are closed by eleven P M, that's right, service to cease by twelve thirty M, and then the same thing about patrons must be out.
If there's music, does it stay?
We'll be, we'll, we'll.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Alright.
No patrons, okay, and I'll.
Windows here.
Yeah, that's later, that's at the very end, but it gets to that.
It's in there, cause it, it follows what.
Yeah, we've done the others.
Yeah.
Okay, then you wanna put down here, you put down except, otherwise, except.
No, no, just, this is alright, this is alright. Okay, um, then in the last, whereas clause, it says, whereas on October sixth, twenty twenty-one, the public hearing was closed, I think that's twenty twenty-two. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Fifty-five days, not that big of a deal.
Unless he went back to the future. Okay. Now, the second, whereas clause. Um, it says, whereas reflected in the administrative records for the application, the applicant has previously had violations, though I should say, violations had previously been issued to the applicant by the village and the state liquor authority. Did you get that? You want me to say it again, Lori?
Violation by?
No, 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 whereas reflected in the administrative records, violations had been or were issued to the applicant by the village and the state liquor authority relating to operating in excess of permitted hours of operation. And you can take out including a violation from the state liquor authority, because we put it in the prior sentence, which have been resolved and or settled.
Okay, as reflected in administrative record for the application, violations were issued by the New York State Liquor Authority and the village of Mamaroneck relating to operating in excess of permitted hours.
Yes. I don't have anything else on that page, anybody else have anything?
Um, well, just under the first, now therefore be resolved, the, uh, number one. Um, I don't think it should be the premises is currently. I don't think it should be the premises is currently approved.
That's how we usually write it.
Really?
Yeah.
It is currently approved?
It is, it is improved, yeah.
In the same here, buddy.
This.
That's fine. All I did was, I liked it.
Okay, now we need to, oh. Uh, someplace in here, we have to add whether it's in the findings or I, I think in the findings, we need to add a provision that explains why we are not, I, I assume we didn't really, that we are not going to renew this. You know, with an unlimited, but that will, um, I propose, I think we discussed, we're only going to renew it for two years because of the history of noncompliance and we have to see if they're now going to comply. So we have to explain that in the findings.
You have to explain that if it's limited?
What? I think we should. I think otherwise the question is maybe it's appropriate to explain to you not want to?
Well. You, you had in the whereas clause.
Yeah.
Uh, that you just, you know.
Think it's enough, it's self evident.
So, yeah, man, thirty days, they kind of challenge it anyway.
There, you made your determination and, uh, I don't think that it's, you know, unreasonable. We don't have to do. Uh, you know, regurgitate. Correct.
Okay. Now. Well, okay, the last whereas clause says there are residents living nearby the premises that would be adversely impacted by noise from a restaurant used being permitted until two AM. Seven days a week. That's not what they're currently asking for. They're currently asking for one AM on Thursday. They're asking for midnight, one AM and two AM. So that's got to reflect the current ask. Which is midnight Sunday, Sunday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, well, let's discuss, well, let's.
Why don't, why, instead of seven days a week, when you put any, any, any.
It doesn't matter, but there's more issues than just two AM. So let's stop a minute. What are the hours we want to give them? The, what do we, let's get that first, then we can go back to this and figure it out. Uh, because not just two AM, they want one AM on, on some days and mid, you know, so it's more than just till two AM. We also don't necessarily want to give Thursday till one AM or weeknights till midnight. That's what we have to discuss. We, uh, number D on page three are with the hour chart. So I mean, that's, that, that's kind of the key, what? I, I right, and that's, if we're going with this, then we, then this paragraph needs to say that would be adversely impacted by noise from a restaurant used being permitted um, later than eleven PM, Sunday to thir-, uh, um, on Sunday to Thursday, except, or one AM on Friday and Saturday. That's what we're, we're not going past those hours. So we need to say that, not two AM, seven days.
He requested two AM and you're, you're saying?
He requested, the current request is midnight on Sunday, Tuesday and Wednesday. One AM on Thursday and two AM on Friday, Saturday. We're not giving him any of that.
But in this paragraph.
So this paragraph.
Important focus is that we believe, uh, in order not to disturb the residents living nearby the premises, that Sunday through Thursday, hours should be limited to, you know, not past eleven.
Right, and.
And on Saturday and Sunday.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Friday and Saturday, not past one AM.
Right, okay. So that's what this paragraph has to say, not two AM, because that's irrelevant. Okay.
Right, it's not about his ask. It's about, it's about the noise impact.
Well, it is about his ass because we're saying we're not going to do his ass, which is eleven, the one and two.
Our, our finding is when to shut down the noise.
Correct, but that's what we think. We are not doing it, but we can't say it's permitted until two. It's all the different hours. Okay.
Uh, but you already have that in the whereas on the first page, based on this request. And after finding that such hours would adversely impact nearby residents, the board amended the applicant's existing special use permit in the par approval to the.
Existing special permit. That's not what we're doing. They're asking to extend the hours now. They, their existing hours now are eleven PM on weekdays and one AM on Friday and Saturday. So they have come back asking to extend them and we're not going to give them extended hours.
Okay.
Well, but they vote, they're also, they're, they're asking for a special permit because there's, there has expired.
Well, that, 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 right, but tha- that's the point, that these hours, well, not if they grant, according to this, they got it in July.
They did.
Right, which is why there's something strange about this.
They did it. Their special permit.
Has expired.
Expired in the end of October of twenty twenty two.
So then, and you, you take on the revised ones and saying that's what they're looking for, right?
Correct, so that's what he had to say.
Yeah, you don't have to refer to the other part.
So you, you're going to keep it under the current.
Under the current hours. Okay, but now I understand. Okay. Okay, so the board finds that the residents living nearby the premises would be adversely impacted by the requested
hours.
Extension of hours of operation.
Correct, that's it. And then, yep, that's all we need. And then we go back through the rest is fine. Except that again, with the ceases, it shall cease. E under be further resolved, E food service shall cease. Instead of ceases everywhere. And again, not papers must be out of the premises, what we discussed earlier about Dave's language, no patron shall remain in.
Get out.
Then in the, uh, E lowercase d, it says the premises shall close all doors and windows at ten PM, not after ten PM, but at ten PM. They have to close at ten PM and then every day is two words, of course. On every day that music or any amplified sound is being said, played on the premises. Um, and, and, anybody have anything else?
So, so, um, I guess I missed that. What are the hours that we're agreeing to?
Eleven to, well, the same as the we, they're not extending the hours, so eleven to eleven.
Item D.
That is extending the hours.
No, that's current hours.
Not according to the.
No.
Current hours, and I have it in front of me. Is until, um, Monday through Thursday to ten PM.
So then we're extending them an hour. Okay.
Friday, eleven, ten thirty to eleven thirty, Saturday until eleven thirty.
But is that the original resolution, not the one he already extended a year later? Because nobody has seen that. That twenty twenty one one was MIA and I don't think it's been sent around. Charlie sent it to me just to give to the applicant.
Okay, now this is dated November fifth, twenty twenty.
No, the twenty twenty one one was extended already.
Okay, I have in my note, yeah, I have.
And we just don't know what that is.
Let me find it. Let me see if I could find it.
But we don't know where the July six.
There isn't one.
Twenty twenty two.
Be one.
Came from, yeah, we don't know what that's from.
Can't help you, I'm sorry. I'm the new kid on the block. I'll tell you what happens in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen.
So the renewal came in August, just FYI. See, the application originally was to extend the hours.
Right.
Then this renewal, which I uploaded in August, which means it came in sometime in July, I assume. I don't know why it's being so slow.
Maybe the application was submitted on July sixth.
Yeah.
It's not July. July sixth was not a, a meeting date because July, we made it later in the year, so.
It couldn't have been granted, especially if this was filled out August fifteenth and uploaded August twenty third. So either way, it wouldn't have.
I think July sixth might have been when he came back, uh, asking for the extension of hours.
July sixth was probably not a meeting because we don't meet the first Monday of July. We met later in the month.
No, we had an extra meeting in July. We had two.
I know.
And you know what? This, this must have been for the ask. Uh, it certainly wasn't granted. Uh, I, I think he, he wanted to extend his hours during the summer.
Um, the ZBA was Wednesday, the seventh. It was not the sixth, so nothing happened on the sixth. The sixth was, yeah, the sixth was a Wednesday. We had a meeting on the, the seventh, which was the Thursday, the seventh and the twenty eighth.
You know, if you just removed the last clause and you said, he's seeking a renewal and amendment of its special permit to operate existing restaurant on the above captioned premises in Corinne's prior approval.
Yeah. We can take that out, you're right.
You just take out the clause.
Yeah.
And it's, it's true.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, that'll do.
Because it seems like that there was something in twenty twenty one that fell through the cracks, so.
Brittany, you can't find the twenty twenty one?
I didn't post it, but I remember working with Charlie on this. I just have to see if I can access my full, trying to see if it's here.
I have something that you sent us that was, uh, from a meeting held on November fourth, twenty twenty one.
Yep, that is it. Is that the resolution to, with it? Do you know when I sent that? Do you have a date?
No, um.
Oh, I found it. One moment. Yes, okay, here's the twenty twenty one. This is the one that we didn't have.
Yeah, and I think maybe it just wasn't signed off on or something because.
Yes, that's what happened.
It was sent to Amber and then when I started, I didn't get it. I started at like three weeks.
Dave, Dave signed off on this on July.
So the prior approval. Prior approval included the following hours, which was ten thirty to ten. Yeah, what, what Greta read was the original.
Right, so that, the date comes from the fact that, uh, it, it only got to Dave uh, in July and he signed off, to me, it looks like July fifth, twenty twenty two.
Oh, but that was not the original granting. That was the extension of hours. The original was November fifth, twenty twenty, and then on November fourth, twenty twenty one was the extension of the hours. It says apply this board to amend its special permit to operate an existing restaurant, which was granted on November fifth, twenty twenty prior approval.
Right.
So that makes sense.
Right.
And then Dave signed it on yeah, July fifth, twenty twenty two, because he didn't sign it back in November and he crossed it out.
Right, I remember, okay. That I remember was they want me to sign something, I said, that is November, I think.
Right.
So, so what are the hours?
So this says it shall, Sunday through Thursday, closed by ten PM, service ceases at ten thirty, patrons must be out of the premises by eleven. Friday through Saturday, uh, ceases by twelve thirty, patrons must be out by one.
Okay, we got it, we had it, by then we had it right.
And then how long is that supposed to last? When does that? Um, expire?
I don't believe this did. I believe it's in, oh, here. Expire on November fifth, twenty twenty two. That was the same as the original branded special.
Was granted November for an initial, but it expired. The amendment is provided for him to not alter the need to speak an extension. This was just about the hours.
Yes.
Right, right, so it didn't change the.
So now circling back to Greta's question. Uh, the hours which were approved on this extension, on this extension are the hours we're approving on the current. Uh.
We're not granting them an extension.
Right. And that, that's what Greta was asked.
And what was, not the date it was signed, because I understand it got lost in the sauce. What was the date that you, that the vote occurred?
November fourth, twenty twenty one to extend the original, amend the original, I'm sorry.
All right.
We're essentially giving them an extension of the special permit with no changes to what they currently have.
Giving them an extension of, we're extending the special permit for the extended hours that we granted in.
We're incorporating that.
Correct.
And for two years. But that doesn't answer the, no, 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 I go back to what I said. The fact, normally, even though they had, the hours kept changing. It was, is it clear from this that the reason we're only giving them two years is because they had problems with complying with the last set of, of, of things? In other words, otherwise, why are we giving them a two year?
I think it's self evident.
You think it's self evident, okay.
Yeah.
Fine. Okay.
We have that option, I mean.
Yeah, it's a condition of the approval. It raises, uh, just, it is what it is. It speaks for itself.
It doesn't really, but I'm not sure what that means.
Well, we don't have to.
I know we don't have to, and I wonder, do we want to? That was my question. Do we want?
Can't hurt it. If you feel strongly about it, then do it. I mean, it's not, they just say, in light of the, just you can say.
That was what I proposed.
I don't have a problem with it. And if that's, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel, if you feel strongly about it.
If you feel strongly, do it.
You're, you're treating it as, as if it's a penalty. There's nothing in the, you know, in, in the law that says that we have to have an open ended permit. And, and we actually have had many cases. I think there was one where there was a, a massage establishment that had some, I don't know, some outstanding violations and, and because there had been outstanding violations.
Yes, but, and all of those, for example, including Molly Spillane's, had a lot of the same issue. We explained that there was because they had problems. Here, there's nothing in here that indicates it had problems. That's the reason I wanted to say something. If you don't think it's, if nobody, if the board doesn't really think it's necessary.
I don't, I think it's fine if you want to put it in there. It, it's.
I, I think that you're going on a wealth experience and if that's what you feel, it would be consistent with our history. Uh, I certainly wouldn't be opposed. You can just basically repeat.
I said, I wanted to have a, a finding that says, um, that we are extending it for two years because that they have, um, because of the number of violations issued to, related to the, um, exceedance of permitted hours. That's why, I mean, if they didn't, they didn't have any violations, I mean, you know, then we'd be, would normally renew it for, and while it's, yes, we don't have to, that is our custom.
So then, just, why don't you do it in reverse and just say, in light of the, the, in light of the board's knowledge of the prior issues that have arisen, this permit will be for two years, special permit. Just, you know, that's less of a penalty. It's like, okay, in light of that, this, this thing is up.
That's fine, either way.
But that's fine. I, I mean, I think if, if you feel that way, that's absolutely fine. Then they should do it.
Okay. Anything else anybody have on it? So if I could clarify, the top of page three. It says, all aspects of the prior approval remain with, and I'm going to change it to with no increase in the length of the hours of operation. Correct. In order to minimize identified noise impacts, right? They're not mitigating identified just.
Did you, did you mention the typo for G it further resolved?
Did you, I might have, I missed that one. Where, which one?
It's the bold.
That he had further resolve, oh, oh, oh.
Oh, yeah.
I saw that.
Me so loved.
Be so loved.
Loved.
Oh, that's nice.
The result.
I'm thankful.
Oh. I even missed it. Resolve. Resolve.
Oh, yes.
Can you get that, please?
Yes, it sounds Latin. Okay.
Love Latin.
Wonderful language.
Okay, I can make those changes. We're cross processing.
Okay, so, um.
All right, okay, we've got the edits in. Is there a motion to approve this resolution as edited? Is there a second? Okay, all those voting in favor, let's see, uh, in the week. Oh, you're not voting. Okay, so.
Oh, you're not voting. Okay, so you're right, because she wasn't a on the board.
You'll abstain.
Abstain. Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes, Greta, Dave, I vote yes as well. That was stupid. Okay, next. Closed application is. In my order. Eight eighty six Oriente. Application thirteen A P twenty two. Okay. So. I have some edits.
Yeah.
So the so just grow one, two, three, four, five, six. Six. So then we after after the sixth whereas clause. So the seven. The board finds seems to me that if there's a finding, it should come much later. Right? We're making a finding that comes later. All the rest is just facts. So I think that that should, I'm not sure where it should go, but if it's a finding as opposed to just a statement. Then I think, but I don't think it needs to be a finding. I think we can just say whereas construction of the improvements is complete.
Yeah.
Where are you?
The second.
Whereas clause.
I can't. I can't have seen. I have to be able to.
Have you seen the C O?
We haven't. Well, there was one. We haven't seen. Well, I don't know.
I think you do. They're gonna make a finding or.
Maybe the board has been informed. That's what it could say.
Yeah.
The board.
And it's not recent and it's not reviewed.
Eighty three port drive. No, we're eight eighty six Oriente. Okay, I'm in the wrong. I wonder I couldn't find. Okay, so the seventh where as.
What were you saying on that? I'm sorry, Rob.
The board four, five, six, seven, the board has been informed.
Okay.
That construction of the improvements is complete and that the village has issued a certificate of occupancy for the carriage house.
Do you know when can we put that on?
We don't know when they just told us. Unless unless it's Dennis is there or Carolina, but I don't think either of them know. Do you know, Brittany?
I think I have a copy of it. Let me see.
Then we don't have to say.
Can you share it? Yeah.
Then we don't have to say the board has been informed. Then we can say the record reflects. Yeah. I know somebody could. We were told that. Oh, there it is. It's no, that's building karma.
That's a.
Right. We can't access municipality from here. I'd have to check that and get back to you, Laurie.
Okay, then we can just say the board has been informed.
Okay.
And.
But the issue I would just, Rob, if you're gonna. Go into the the concern is, what is it a C O?
We don't know.
I guess then you have to say that we haven't seen it.
We we know that it was for the carriage house, but what it showed.
What it's for. Right. We don't know.
We don't know.
Um, before we get off the page, could we just go to the the second, the second sentence? There's just a typo. End of the sentence, which was, yeah, which was granted.
Second sentence?
Yeah, the first, the second line, first sentence of the first whereas clause.
Right now it's graded.
It goes greater.
It might be greater or lesser.
I don't want to make.
Should be granted. Okay, then we go to the eighth and ninth, and the eighth and ninth could go before. The seventh, because the building permit is granted first, then the certificate of occupancy is grant is issued. We so the the eighth and nine, so whereas the building permit was issued on May fifteenth, whereas the building permit was renewed. Whereas construction is complete.
Okay, so move this down to below those.
Correct. Got it.
When was it? July? There wasn't there a gap or something?
We probably paid the extra fee for an expired permit. Usually there's.
I think somebody explained to us that.
It was a time lag on November. One of the issues was whether that started something again, but.
Okay, third whereas clause on the second page. It says, whereas Stewart secret alleges that twenty twenty, the secret property was denied. Use like said property with one additional dwelling unit.
What do you have a?
Third, whereas on the second page, not with additional dwelling units, only one additional dwelling unit within. The property, I guess it should say.
Within his.
It's not within his residence, because it's not.
Within his property, within.
But it's within the property.
No. No, because he has a separate outbuilding, which has.
Right, but it's it doesn't matter whether you have three or four. He was requesting one additional. Doesn't say it's a one family house. He was requesting one additional for the four in the first in one building.
Yeah, inside. And that's why they call. I think they called it a residence.
No, it's a residence either way.
The way it's a residence.
Residence is somebody lives there.
No, but I'm saying. Well, you were saying within his property, but I'm just trying to figure out which word we.
It doesn't. Oh, well, he's got a, his building is a two, has two units in it already, and he wanted to add a third.
Yeah.
So.
So how do you designate his building as opposed to the other building that's on?
Right, but I don't know that it matters because it's an additional unit, whether it's all the, there's three units now on the property.
So then it shouldn't be within. It should be on.
Oh, I see what you're saying. On the property. Perfect. Yeah, you're right. That's fine. That's all. You're right. Then. In the next whereas clause, it says have not set forth any con any other concrete injury. I think it should just said. Any other injury. I don't know what a concrete or a non-concrete injury is, but I think the word concrete should come out. Those are the only injuries they said for.
Yeah, you know, I I actually I highlighted that as well. I think maybe in the right, i- i- in the mind of the writer, he was trying to come up with some.
Fourth whereas on the second page.
He was using his thesaurus, as I often do.
No, I think it was trying to distinguish between a sort of a theoretical injury of. He they got treated differently than me versus say like a. A real injury.
Well, there's the, but the injuries that are set out by the code are are. Agrieved. Uh, there there are certain, there are certain.
But they're claiming.
Things in the code, but I think that it's fine leaving it. The way you said.
Yeah, I just take out the word concrete.
Right.
So it's either way. Want to put leave the word concrete in there?
No, I wouldn't. I think it should go out. There's any injury, whatever. I don't.
Okay, okay. Then um, then F then there's a. Yeah, do you have something on the next one?
Yeah, I am with two sets of comments, but one is just based on this and the other is my own opinions on this. The this is, if you're gonna say on the next one. In accordance with New York state law as a matter of procedure, I don't, I don't. Know if you want to say that. I I agree with it, but besides the fact I don't agree with it is. I don't know why this is air. That's you. You would put that with every application.
Yeah, I think we can take that out. I I don't see like.
Yeah, it's I I think it's it just cloud clouds up and it's argumentative.
Well. It's a stand. It's a standing question. If you have stand.
Yeah, but we don't normally consider this is the same. We don't normally for every application say to us. Say, do we have stand? Is there? Do they have standing? Do they file it within the right time? We don't usually lay that out in the resolutions. Do we need to? Is there a reason to lay it out in this resolution is what he's raising?
Yeah, because you're gonna use that as basis to not.
I think we.
To dismiss this on a technical nature.
Right. And and actually, I think that he probably put that in there. I think it's too exactly what Lori.
It's almost like I leave it. It's fine with leaving.
But your next.
Yeah, but I know, but but I I'm getting into something a little bit bigger here. I think that he's trying to lay the groundwork for not only. Uh, to determine whether or not an appellate is aggrieved, but also whether uh, the the appeal was timely or not. Um, and we had certain discussions here, although I did bring it up and it went through things. Uh, I believe somebody made a comment saying, well, if you determine that he doesn't have one. We don't even need to go to the other. So I think that that's more of of, you know, what? You know, do we need to mention that here? Or not? I mean, I guess you, I guess you could mention it here either way. But I think it gets into a discussion that we have to have with the rest of the.
Yeah, but it's, but I I think the problem with this is I see, I I mean, to me, the the only problem with, I think the more is. In accordance with New York state law, as a matter of procedure, the board shall determine. Um, maybe it's we this. It's not like we have to do that on every appeal. We don't do that normally on every. Okay, so I guess we do consider it. We just don't talk about it. Yes, because we don't.
But you deal with an agreement. You see, I think the next paragraph, but I'm not gonna argue this one. Do which one? Village law seven, seven, twelve states. Okay, it's appellate only and a person's got to be agreed. That's fine. That says it all, doesn't?
Well, I think the first is trying to, I think, think with the way Brian was saying it was right. I think maybe we don't have to say, take as a, I think we can take out the words as a matter of procedure. So if we just said in accordance with New York state law. The board must determine.
Or shall determine.
But it's, but that implies it's a. Must is something where shall determine, maybe we could leave a shall, but it's take out as a matter of procedure. Um, whereas in accordance with New York state law, the board shall determine two. Red threshold questions prior to reaching the merits of this.
You can switch it around and say prior to reaching the merits of any appeal. To threshold requirements.
That sounds.
And then then you're taking the board out of it.
That sounds good.
Do you think of that? In in order to reach the merits of an appeal.
The board must have.
Or yes, to, yeah.
That sounds.
An applicant must. Yeah.
That sounds.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Let's switch it around. The good old passive voice.
Could you, is that before reaching the merits, you're saying?
I'm seeing in order to, in order to reach the merits of an appeal under New York state law. The board must deter must find. Compliance or must find. That the applicants are aggrieved.
Agreed.
Okay, and that the appeal is timely.
Must find that.
Are you saying before reaching the merits or deciding the merits?
You can't reach it. You can't. You can't reach the merits. You can't reach.
Never discussed the the we never discussed the merits on this case because it was a threshold question.
No, I don't really at all. As a matter of fact, you were concerned. On a September meeting that they have a chance for the merits. And Charlie and I will just clear this up because Charlie and I have gone back and forth. Charlie said you have to reach the merits, but. Because you can't separate them out because standing and I don't want to argue this point, but it's. And the only cases in the Haran case, they said you can't separate them out. You've got to do the merits. And then in order to make the finding.
No, we discussed.
Agree, but we discussed the merits and we actually.
We actually did not discuss the merits.
Because they didn't want to speak to them. We asked them. We asked the applicant's attorney. It's in the record. We asked the applicant's attorney, what about this? What about that? He says, I don't want to go there. We're gonna, we're relying solely on the other issue. And that's all. And he didn't want it.
But we didn't discuss it. That's all. And that's correct. We, as the board, did not discuss the merits.
Well, here we are to liberate, so I guess.
How about in order to consider the merits of an appeal? The board must find two legal thresholds.
Well, I we can stick with what Dave, I think, is suggesting. He says in order to determine the merits.
Okay.
There, you know. I I guess.
See, I think it's seven, seven, twelve, everything. It is that they they have to be aggrieved and that they have to be within the statute of limitations. I'm not, I I think that's. But when you start to say the other way, but do it as you wish, because I mean. I do have issues with this, but that the boy shall determine to, but whatever you guys say. But I will say this, that there was a memo. Charlie at first said we should do a threshold, and then when I pointed out some cases and we discussed it, he then wrote and said, no, you 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 do it on the merits. And in the Haran case. It was, which was the only case I could find where they ever dealt with this. The court said, no, you 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 don't split this up. You go back, you hear the whole merits. And you, then you can make your decision accordingly. So there's a record. And that's, and so I just, you know, I'm not gonna.
There's lots, lots of, yeah, that's because you were trying to separate the ones that went to court versus the ones with.
Right, because standing is is not a, standing is not an issue. The aggrieved is an issue in in village law. Seven, one, twelve, eight, four. So you see, but but standing, but all the cases, and when you go to this later on, all of the cases dealing with standing. All say it's a judicial doctrine, and one of the cases even says it's 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 not on the initial application. It's. Basically, you can't invoke the court at that point unless you have some special, but it's, but but it is substantively, I'm not disagreeing with you that. You have to be aggrieved under the way. The village law writes it. So it's an agreement. But it be as it may.
It's it's an agreement.
Right.
And so then the question here is for is specifically. Whether or not we we mentioned getting to the merits or or not.
We didn't get to the merits. We determined that it didn't. They weren't aggrieved. Therefore, we couldn't go any further. We didn't have to discuss anything further. That's what we determined.
But Rob, we didn't make any determination. Now is the deliberation. When we were here and I said, we're gonna, I was just, we we went to the merits. I said, let's go to the merits. The applicant didn't want to go to the merits. Fine. So we had the record before us, and actually, I don't think. It would have been helpful, the applicant. The applicant said, no, they're not gonna go. And I actually have notes. Ryan, you said, don't they have an opportunity to go to the merits?
No, no, no. I said, I believe, and I can look it up, in the Haran case. Uh, the court upheld the Z B A's determination that they could not, that they didn't have jurisdiction. Uh, to hear the matter.
You can wear.
Hear the matter. I think it was the Haran case to hear the matter.
The brand case said you you denied hearing it. The Haran case was a case where in Scarsdale, it was the.
Uh, this one's in Long Island, so so maybe I have the wrong, but there was, there was.
Supreme said you can't separate it out. You have to go on everything. And that's kind of actually, they used some interesting words, and then they wrote a second order right away saying, no, the proper way to do this is you consider it all. Then one of the elements is, and the seven, seven, ten on the statute.
I'm sorry, it was Hadland's. Hadland versus Z B A. You must show that you're aggrieved.
Lots of cases.
Yeah, but you have to show you're agreed.
I know, but the Z B A uh, said that they did not have jurisdiction to hear it. Uh, because the person wasn't aggrieved, so they didn't hear the merits. They dismissed it on the fact that the person uh, was not deemed to be aggrieved. It was Hadland.
I I think we're getting into into the detail. We, as a board, did not discuss the merits. That's number one. Number two. If the board doesn't, if the parties aren't aggrieved, we can't consider the application, period. So all we have to say in accordance with New York's, whatever you, and the way you said it, the board can only consider an an appeal. Do it in the affirmative. The board can only consider an appeal if. The parties bringing the appeal are aggrieved and the appeal is timely. Say it in the affirmative. And that's correct.
It's not according to the law, but I'm already wrong with you. Yeah. But okay, so.
Well, you know.
But whatever. Don't worry about it. I mean, what it is.
I'm not worried about it, Dave.
I'm not either. So there we go. Worrying is not something we should do.
Okay.
It's gonna say. In order to consider the merits of an appeal under New York state law.
The board.
What if you just said in order, take out the word the merits. In order to consider an appeal.
Right. The board must, there must the party bringing it must be aggrieved. The board. The board must. No, no, the applicant must be aggrieved and um, the applicant and the and the and the appeal must have been timely filed.
Okay.
That's that's just the statement of the law without. And that's accurate.
That you can't hear it.
You can't hear it.
You can't hear it. So that if if.
If someone. It doesn't say that.
That's not what she said.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said you can't.
No, no, no. Let Robin say it again.
I know, but I was, okay.
I think I said, what did I say? Now I don't know what I said. Probably to considering, probably.
No, you said.
You said, under New York state law, the board can only, that's what I said, consider an appeal if the appellants are aggrieved and the appeal is timely.
But you can't notice you won't. You can't conduct a hearing is what you're saying? I'm I'm trying to understand you, Rob, and I'm not, I'm not in case. I just want to understand what you're saying.
We conducted a hearing, so obviously we can conduct a hearing.
Right.
But the hearing was that we conducted was on the.
Technical ask those threshold question.
Actually, it wasn't. They raised everything.
We considered everything.
We didn't consider everything. Some of us didn't. Some of us didn't consider everything. So I don't know that the board. We didn't consider everything. Some of us didn't. Some of us didn't consider everything. So I don't know that the board considered everything.
How about in, in order to rule on an appeal?
Fine, in order to rule on an appeal.
In order to rule on an appeal.
Yeah.
In order to, to, to determine, in order to rule on. I mean, here, here's the, here's the red. It's just. Yeah, fine, I'm that, but.
We don't need to go back to that all the time. It's one case.
No, no.
In order to determine an appeal, how's that?
On the merits.
Would you have to say the merits?
You're.
Okay, fine.
You, you're determining this appeal.
Oh, right. In order to determine the merits of an appeal.
Okay, fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, and that's different than reaching. And I, I understand what David's saying.
Okay.
Determine.
Hey, in order to determine appeal on the merits under New York state law.
No, you're not. You're determining the merits of an appeal. You don't, you're determining appeal.
An appeal. In order to determine. An appeal on the merit.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Under New York state law. The appellant. Must be aggrieved and the appeal must be timed.
All right, yep. Okay, then the next is this, this statement, then the next. Whereas is the statement of the law. Related to agreement, village law seven, seven, twelve. It said, and then this is the statement of the, of the, um. Of the law. Now, we need to, th- then he's got, um, whereas New York courts have set different proximity lengths, but we need to say. Perfect. First, we need to say that that's relevant. The distance of. An appellant or of the premises that is the subject of the appeal from the. Um, residence or the, of the appellant is relevant to determining a grievance. Otherwise, the next. The, um, these red, next couple of clauses make no sense because they haven't said that's right. So I think we need an affirm, a paragraph that simply says something to the effect of, whereas the distance from the. Pro- property that is the subject of the appeal, or, um, the distance of the. Appellant from the property that is the subject of the appeal is relevant to a determination. Of a grievance, something like that. Because that's a statement of the. Boy, what I wrote here, my notes say that is subject of the appeal is one method of assessing a grievance. Because we have to say that then. Because then when you say the next one is the courts have said different proximity lengths. At least you know what it's relevant to.
Okay, so you're gonna keep the different proximity.
That's a weird sense.
Yeah, we're just gonna add another whereas in there that says the proximity of the appellant to the property that is the subject of an appeal. Is one method of assessing a grievance.
Yes.
Right. And then, then we say the courts have said different proximity length. Okay.
Yeah, which is just a statement of fact.
Right.
And it is, it is an important.
Right. And then the next couple are the same thing. Irrelevant. If they're all about, then the next two, New York courts have stated, how does not agree to live so far away. Without specific injury, okay. I mean, all the timeliness stuff. Like my. And, and then the third, whereas on this next page says, whereas the board held public hearings. And heard all comments related to the appeal from appellants and, oh no, that's right. Never mind. That's fine. Okay.
Next, whereas there was no December first meeting.
Right. The, the last where as clause three before the be resolved.
Yes.
Today's day, right? We didn't discuss it last week either. No, no.
It's a weekly.
It's just not next week. Right, right. Okay, or it was also last year and last, huh, all the lasts. Okay, um. Then I had no other comments until the last, did you have something, David? I see you've got some notes. Before you turn any pages, the last.
Yeah, I, I.
Romanet IV on that page.
Ivy, yeah, yeah.
And it's just the language. Suzanne McCrory has. I guess it's fine. Has, oh, I was gonna say has alleged that her only agreement was the sole result of not being able to develop McCrory property.
Yeah, but if you take the, uh, I'm sorry, I have a question on that, um, just, you know, the last sentence says the board finds. Making a finding that she has not applied for an accessory dwelling.
I think it's just a statement of fact. We didn't make.
The board, well, it says the board finds that I'm reading with.
Yeah, I know what it said.
I said, it's not a, accessory dwelling, however. When the, the building inspector spoke to us. He said this was not accessory to, he never said it was, he said, he did not say it was an accessory dwelling. He said it was part. It shouldn't be used separately and repart. It was to be used as part of the house. So it never, he never elevated it. That's why I said it's, he never elevated it to an accessory dwelling. He said it's an accessory building. And it's, it's an accessory. He was asked, remember he was asked the question I asked him? So can they use?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking where is it on?
Oh, it's on the top of that. It's on that pet and little V, IV.
Top of four.
It's just that McCrory herself has not applied to the village for an accessory dwelling. Um, it wouldn't be an accessory dwelling. It would be for, it would basically be for a place that has a kitchen or what have you.
Well, the problem is that they didn't, they're not, the, the, the problem is this was not an accessory dwelling.
It's not accessory. Well, Frank said it was not. He said it couldn't be. He said it was a prior non-conforming use aspect. And then he said, I asked him, can they rent it out? Can they use it? He said, no, no, it's got to be used by the people who live in the house.
Right.
But so it's not an accessory dwelling. It's an accessory, whatever you want to call it, structure.
What is, what is, what is the appeal from, uh, the appellants? What are they accusing?
They're alleging that it's an accessory dwelling.
Right. So then this would be correct that, you know, it's just that we're finding. You know, she's saying that, hey, this is an accessory, uh, uh, dwelling and.
Um, did they say?
That's what they said. Yeah, that's what.
That's what the appellants.
Yeah, but this implies that this appeal is that, that, that this is an accessory dwelling. Doesn't it?
Can we say with similar improvements?
No, it's, the issue is whether or not it's a dwelling. What they have alleged, what they allege. What the applicants allege is that. If you look at it, it's clearly an exa- it's a separate dwelling unit. That's what they're saying.
All right.
But the building permit doesn't say an accessory dwelling unit. It's just that it happens to be a. Freestanding building that has bedrooms, kitchens, bathrooms, looks like a dwelling unit.
Okay.
Except he said that it wasn't, and that wasn't his intention. So I don't think you want to. Maybe you do. I don't think you elevate it to be that, because by saying. She didn't apply for an accessory dwelling. It's really for an accessory structure.
No, the accessory structure is okay. There's no problem with having.
I, I know. I, I actually think that the suggestion by counsel. Which is, is, is the most accurate way to say it in the fact.
She wasn't allowed.
She, no, she, no, she has not applied for similar improvements.
Oh, just saying that.
For similar improvements.
Has only alleged that her agreement was the sole result of her not being able to develop the McCrory property with similar improvements. As the property owner.
That's fine.
And we don't, we won't classify it, the accessory dwelling.
Right.
She wasn't trying to.
She hasn't even applied for.
No, see, and that's, that was the end of the sentence. She, she hasn't even applied. She, she hasn't even applied to do it.
Didn't you say that, isn't that a fact though, that they tried to get it before she owned it?
Yes.
Okay, so that runs with the land, doesn't it? But it runs with the land, doesn't it?
That's a denial, doesn't run with the land. She could apply for it. She assumed she wouldn't get it because the prior owner got it, but the fact that somebody was denied doesn't mean that I can't apply.
Yeah, and, and if that was twenty five years ago, she could, uh, apply for new renovations.
Yeah. I mean, there's a limit. You can't apply every week, but you know, there's something in the code about what is every year or six months. So there's a time period. But certainly she could have.
Dave, she, she wasn't the applicant that you denied.
No.
There.
But I also think that from her standpoint, if you came in to ask for it, they could say, you ran with the line. You bought the house that way. Guess what? You bought it? You knew about this? But you did, whatever. All right, move on.
Okay. And then, uh, just to finish the last, depending on how you're gonna say it.
The last sentence there, it says, but a prior owner was denied such development.
Right.
You have to fix that. Okay. So it says she only alleged, her only alleged. Has only alleged that her agreement was the sole result of her not being able to develop the McCrory property with similar improvements to. The carriage house and that by permitting the improvements to the carriage house.
And that the permitted improvements to the carriage house resulted in unequal application.
The improvements to the carriage house, the village has unequally applied the code.
Yeah, either way.
Building inspector testified it was not a separate dwelling.
Right.
Was to be used the same owners as an accessory to the house.
Right. So it's, it's more appropriate, as you say, it really is more appropriate to put similar improvements.
Yes. Then we're not classifying what it is or what she could have asked for, what mi- might have been asked for by other people.
Right. Because at that point, now you're making a determination on the merits. As to what it is and what it is.
That's right. Okay, then my next comment is on B. Romanet, B, Romanet four again, B four, under. Four. Then the last sentence that was added here, the board finds that the T-cred property was the subject of two recent appeals. I don't think that's necessary. I think we can take out that sentence.
Yeah, I had that asterisk too.
Because it doesn't. Yeah, to start beginning with. The, the, the board finds that the T-cred property was the subject of two recent appeals for additional dwelling units.
Okay, I think.
Because it's, it's confusing and.
Well, no, no, I, I think maybe the reason why that was put in and, you know.
Dwelling unit, right?
Yeah, it's the fact that there's, you know, on this, on this property. He has two separate dwelling units, uh, so.
On which property?
On his property.
He only owns one, he owns a condo unit, one unit. That building has two condo units in it, but he only has one condo unit. He doesn't have two units.
The property has another building on it.
Yes.
Which is a separate residence.
The property has a building over here which is one residence. Then it has this building which has two units in it.
Three floors.
He was putting a third unit in it.
No, no. I get that.
Okay.
I guess what, uh, Charlie may have been trying to say here is that here you have one property. With two separate dwelling units.
It, it's not relevant because that property got a variance to put the units. That a property had applied to get three units, the board, that property had applied what, years ago, right? There'd been an application for variance to have one unit in the separate building and three units in the bigger building. The board denied the three units in the bigger building and only granted two units in the bigger building. So that property has three units on it. The whole lot has three units on it. That's what it's got now legally. What he had to, Stuart T-cred had applied, he hadn't applied. He'd appealed a determination of the village that. The way he was using his particular unit was creating a fourth unit on the property. A third unit in the building, a second unit in his single unit, however you want to work.
Does, does he own the entire property?
No, he owns his unit.
Yeah, well, then I agree with you. Might not be relevant.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It would just go towards, you know, whether or not you were aggrieved. He's saying, I haven't been able to develop my property in the same way.
He just wanted to put his third, a third floor.
Right. So now I understand. I think over here, it was put in here as if had he owned the entire property. It would, it would kind of, uh. You know, not, not bolster his case and the fact that there actually are, you know, more than one, uh, residents on the property. So no.
I would take out the last two sentences of that clause.
Yeah.
Which clause? I mean, I, I don't.
Romanet four.
Right.
No, no, you're not.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, I would take it everything beginning with.
Further, in a prior.
The board finds that T-cred, the T-cred property was the subject of two recent appeals to this board. For additional dwelling u- units within a multi-unit building on the T-cred pro- yeah, that in, the next, that could stay. But then the next, further in a prior appeal, I would take out the fur, everything from the.
Right, from the fur. That's, and, and that's why I had put an asterisk because I had questions about it.
Yeah, everything from further out. Okay. You, uh, okay.
So take out further all the way. So can we say it was the subject of two recent appeals to this board?
It was only.
Concerning additional dwell.
It's actually wrong. The board finds that it was the subject of one additional. And it wasn't.
Can we say concerning one additional unit?
But it's not, there weren't two recent appeals for additional dwelling units. This is just wrong. That's, that's just wrong. I would.
So I was just taking the word four out and saying concerning.
But that's not what he did. He didn't, right? He didn't apply for additional dwelling units. He appealed aboard the village determination that what he'd done was create an additional dwelling.
Oh, I know.
Right. So this isn't right either, is what, as.
So that's why it's, and he didn't, he didn't appeal for additional. He appealed concerning. Allegations of an additional.
So you could say concerning, okay. And it's an additional dwelling unit.
Yes, multiple, right.
Right.
Then on the next page five, row of, um, letters five C, okay? It's toward the last, next to last line, it says, after learning of the construction, it says, should have reviewed the building plans. I don't think we're gonna value judgment. They could have. I think points they could have.
All right.
Not they should have, but they could have because they could have. They, they, you know, because they could have, they could, would have known.
All right, they were in.
Are you, you're finding that as of?
No, I'm on page five.
Yeah. Yeah. So what I'm saying is, so this was when the permit was issued was when, um, after learning of the construction. When was the permit issued? The first permit? May twenty? May twenty on the top.
Twenty one.
Right. So, May fifteen, twenty twenty one. So when, when did he, when could he review the plans? In December or May?
Yeah.
March.
They were, they were available after the March meeting.
Twenty one from the BAR, you mean?
March eighteen.
So when was the building permit here issued?
May fifteenth. So May fifteenth, they could have come back and looked at the online filing of the BAR plans. They wouldn't have had any reason.
Wouldn't, okay, okay.
There wouldn't have any reason, obviously, to look at it on March eighteen, because they wouldn't have known about it. But after May fifteenth, they could have gone back.
But the plans, you're not saying here that the plans were filed with the, with the village, are you? With the building department, right?
It said because the building plans are publicly available on the village's website for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty one BAR meeting.
Okay. Should have reviewed the building permit available on the village website.
Could have, could have.
Okay, could it? You want to say the village, the, the BAR?
Things that are a little, a little inconsistent.
Yeah, why, why are we, why are we constructive knowledge of the renovations to the carriage house on December third and, and.
Here's the issue. Here's the issue. Here's the issue, which is there's some case law, but not a lot of case law. The issue is this. I get a building, we'll just use it this way. I get a building permit to do something completely illegal on my property. You would have no way of knowing that I got the building permit. So my sixty days could have, could run. Right? And you couldn't have appealed because you didn't know I was doing anything. At some point, you know, I'm doing anything. And I think the point here is he's trying to say that at least as of December third, twenty twenty one. And I think the point here is he's trying to say that at least as of December third, twenty twenty one. They were informed by the building inspector that, so at the very least, even if they had no reason to look on May fifteenth, cause why would they look? By December third, they certainly knew, at which point there was constructive knowledge and they could have filed within sixty days of that.
What construction are you talking about?
What construct?
Constructive knowledge.
It says, balance after learning of the construction.
Right.
And I'm saying, what construction did they learn of? I think they did say that they knew about, it was that they didn't know. It was that a windows replacement, right?
They knew that something was happening.
Right.
They knew there was a um.
Right.
A building permit, and they could have looked at the plans, that's the point, they could have done all those things.
Plans said, but I'm just saying, okay, I don't argue. Plan said it was for windows or something.
Doesn't matter, you're right.
I understand, so.
It also said on the building permit for interior renovations and during the board meeting. The plans showed everything that they were doing.
The B A R.
Yes, and it was even questioned by Dennis Drogen, who's there. Uh specifically about, you know. What in fact that they were doing, so it was. It was brought up at the time, it is in the public domain. You would also think that, you know, in order for there to be a bar review. That anybody within the notice zone, cause you said constructive notice, anybody who is within the notice zone. Did get a uh a notice that the meeting was going to be held. Uh, these applicants were not within the notice zone.
Right.
Because of where they live. Um, so, you know, there's also, there's also.
Right, relevant to whether or not there are other briefs.
But yes, but. You know, but bottom line, the, you know, they they knew directly from the building inspector on December third. Uh, as well, so that's why that's in there.
Right.
Okay.
Wouldn't they know, sorry, the building inspector, because after that that there was construction going on, right?
Yeah.
You're not making a finding as to what he told them, right?
We don't know what he told them.
You're saying they should have known and then they should have kind of gone back and done their detective work.
They, nobody.
But I understand that.
That's why you, but you, we're making a interpretation of constructive knowledge and now you're saying nobody really knows.
So, we know, well, here's the thing, you have sixty days from when um. You have sixty days to appeal, sixty days from what? Building permit from building permit is the normal. Building permit was issued on May fifteenth, if we're saying they had six, should have had sixty days from then, then they should have filed by July fifteen. That's it, they they lost a year before they even filed. Instead, we're saying, okay, well, let's consider constructive notice, they were told for certain. In December that some, that there was construction going on. They could have looked at the plans and if they couldn't look there, they could have gone to the B A R, they knew this was all this work going on, they could have gone to the B A R plans.
Why would they think that, why would they think?
Because the permit required a B A R approval, which is.
You're saying everybody has to go to B A R then, right, so. The idea I think is, from my understanding is that the permit is supposed to indicate the nature of what's being changed. So if my neighbor gets a permit and it says I'm gonna be doing some renovations, I don't assume that he's gonna be moving out the house and changing things.
But they're not, I think.
I I understand, but I am saying, if, but if they're going to make something that doesn't exist there.
We don't know that it doesn't exist.
We knew that it was, there was no second, it was, the place was totally dilapidated and vacant. So we do know that, that's what they told me, right, so we do know that. So when somebody, my neighbor comes to me and says, oh, I'm making some renovations with windows in this, I don't assume that he's gonna go and. Change the whole thing and make it two family or make a second kitchen which not supposed to have. What I'm saying is, I I understand what you're saying, I'm not arguing with you, I mean, we we could disagree and that's fine. I'm just saying, I think it's, it's a heavy burden to put on somebody, I don't think I have to follow that around, my neighbor will think I'm stalking them. At meetings, I went to one B A R hearing for a neighbor and. Haven't talked to them since and I just went there to try to understand what they're doing.
Sorry, but my neighbor, two doors down, was doing, I had to go to the planning board meeting, that's how I found out what they were doing, I went to the planning board.
But wouldn't you get, but wouldn't you get, I understand that, that would go to a subdivision potentially, or site. I understand, but if you went to your neighbor, if you went, if your neighbor gave you a permit, or you've got a permit that didn't say.
I would ask my neighbor what they were doing.
Well, Matt, the permit, the permit said.
Interior renovation.
Part of, part of it said interior renovation. And uh. The building inspector told us and was also discussed at the hearing. There was a kitchen in the building before, before, it always had it.
Right.
Uh, there was what remnants of what was a kitchen, the place was dilapidated, not habitable.
But it was, there was a kitchen.
Right, and how, and if there was a kitchen, assuming on, actually, if there was a kitchen in there, and they were then gonna build the house, the main house shouldn't have been built. I don't wanna go, let's just go ahead.
We don't know when it was done, so it could have been done before there was code, you're right, it's a hundred percent right.
And we're not, and by the, by the way, we're not justifying anything. At all, we're only trying to set whether or not the applicants.
Well, you know, they shouldn't have made up.
Knowledge, because the applicants here. Um, a- a- as far as my knowledge goes. They did a tremendous amount of foil requests.
And he was saying.
You can't see it.
But he could have fought for it.
But it was.
The B A R was right online.
He could have done a lot of things, he could have given up his, but I'm just saying, I, we just disagree on that, it's fine, I don't think. I don't think if I find out my neighbor's got a permit to make renovations, I don't have to assume that it can be not in compliance with the code. I I don't have, I I'm allowed to make that determination, I'm allowed to be interesting, if you will, of the building. And I have a right to. Right, and the foil is supposed to tell me, so for for reasons that I don't understand, uh. They they didn't get out, they wasn't on the permit, said here's what we're renovating, here's what we're doing. Renovation doesn't mean a change, it means renovating.
Right, we don't know that they were changing anything, it was dilapidated, but we don't know what was there before and it doesn't.
Doesn't matter.
They didn't, they perhaps, they arguably didn't know either.
And I don't think I have to go and then, we disagree, I don't think I have to then go to the planning, I have to go to all the, I don't have to do that, I'm entitled to go to one place. Do my foil and say, hey, it's not there, the 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 standard that 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 you're really challenging is. And you're challenging is the building permit, because that's what's gotta be filed. And here, if I challenge that building permit, I could see walking in and someone said, are you crazy? The building permit didn't, they 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 put new windows in, what what are you here for? Oh, I didn't know, I thought maybe they were gonna make it into a, who knows what, but okay.
I think.
I understand you.
I I think that, I think the real problem here, or what might have caused. Uh, or or is, you know, really the underlying basis of the discussion is. That. They're not within the notice zone. For this property, so therefore, when it came to a request to do renovations in a public hearing to discuss those renovations. Um. They weren't aware of it at that time.
The public hearing on the renovations was simply a B A R approval, which has a different set of standards entirely, it wasn't. An approval of a compliance issue, B A R had nothing to do with a compliance issue. It had nothing to do with zoning, they don't amend, they don't grant variances, they don't check compliance, everything they do is subject to. Enough said, I think we understand your point, you understand what, so it was. Is what it is. Um. Where are we now? I have something on, I don't understand the um. I have two, two suggestions for this format, and that is on the merits of the appeal. It said, one second. Um, it says the board, um, give me one second, okay, oh, it says. The board will not consider, why don't we just, why don't you simply say, I think. With the, the board will not determine.
Yeah, I think.
Will not determine the merits.
I think you just need to make affirmative, you already said in the.
But here you're saying, but here you're saying will not consider, I said will not determine the merits.
I think.
That's.
That's fine.
And then there's a sentence here, with all respect, I'm lost on. I don't understand, we we have these, the last two lines on page five. The following, do not disrupt the jurisdiction of the building department.
No, we just make that.
I mean, I think what it should say, what I think he's saying here is, that the above findings. Hang on, I I did, I looked at, no, I think what he's saying is, no, we're here, but just to say, I do not alleviate, do not modify the jurisdiction. Of the building department to enforce the code or the property owners, cause it's like all required building forms, they do not. What you do, unless you put it in on the boilerplate where this is subject to all other requirements.
That we, we do not, we're denying it, we're not making any affirmative findings, so they've appealed that we're denying it, that's it, why do we?
Cause I guess he doesn't wanna see this as, I I guess because you don't wanna see this as an affirmative, what you did was wonderful and good and correct, what he's saying is. Yeah, I think that's the reason, that's why I would have thought he put it in there, that these findings do not alter or. Them, or or all subject to the jur- or all subject to the jurisdiction, that's.
I think maybe not subject to the jurisdiction, I think what it should say is, um, nothing in here, um.
Alter to diminishes the.
Yeah, that's the requirements of the code.
The requirements of the code and the authority of the building, of the, of the building department, yeah, building inspector, yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I thought he meant.
Oh, I didn't have a clue, that's what he meant.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm I'm looking at, well, because I'm looking at, do not disrupt, I mean, that's a fascinating choice of words. But I think what he means is, so what I changed it to, yeah, I I what I did was I just put down, uh, do not disrupt. I said odd language is whatever, instead, findings do not alleviate or, these findings do not modify the jurisdiction.
I don't think the jurisdiction, I think it's, um, nothing in here shall affect the requirements of the code.
Or the, or the, no, or the jurisdiction of the building department, I'm with you, I think that, I think that's, that cleans up a mess, yeah, I. So we can agree to disagree and agree to agree, fantastic.
Question is whether or not counsel actually.
Did you get that, Lori?
Got the stereo.
At first, I I thought it was that the above findings do not modify, but then now you're seeing effect.
Our subject.
You're saying, what we're trying to say is, we we're just making.
Say, no, say, you said it perfect, the above findings do not. Are are subject to.
The provisions of.
The provisions of the code.
Nothing, but they're not subject to, it's nothing in this, um, nothing in this determining count, um.
Alters the requirement.
Of the zoning.
Terms of the zoning code or the jurisdiction of the building department.
Right, I'm not telling you what he doesn't.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, that's, that's, right, cause I did not understand this, but I think that's what, I'm trying to find, what what do you mean? Not as a disrupt.
Okay, are we good? Do you have it all, Lori?
Nothing in this determination. Alter's the requirements of the code or affects the jurisdiction of the village department, but the need for property owners to obtain.
But the building department. For the building inspector, the building inspector, actually, it is the building inspector, that's a term that's a. Yeah, cause that's the person charged by state and local. Building inspector.
Lori, you okay? Yeah, I got it, okay. Are we done?
Um, you want comments?
Do you have anything else?
Sure, I have comments, yeah, 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 my comments are, I think you know them, some extraordinarily brief. Even I can be, um. I I don't agree with much of this and my my reasoning is, as far as I think that the. Aggravement language is, I think that uh it's not the same as the general public here, I think that. The cases that I've gone over here and I've made reference to in the past are such that. Well, you've got somebody here who's in a neighborhood and the neighbor has certain zoning requirements and they're certain applicable to them. I think they can rely upon them and this alters. And affects them, and I think it's not like somewhere else in the village, but they're within whatever, a thousand feet or something. Um. What it does also is by doing that, you're actually having a zoning modification. To the extent that. If the neighbors immediately next to you don't care, then I guess. It it it, you've effectively modified the zone. Um, the cases all talk about being very liberal and the idea about aggrieved, being aggrieved. So I think that, um. That's right, and I think it goes to, she she didn't apply, I mean, I think you've got a clear error that occurred here. Um, and it wasn't addressed and it could have been, even the applicant said, well, they're gonna ask for a variance, but um. So I I don't understand it, and I also don't understand, and I wanna point this out, what the C O is, cause I haven't seen it. Because if the app, if the building inspector said it was not supposed to be a separate dwelling, I would like, wonder what the, it says. The other thing is, you end up with a, um, well, you insulate code violations, which concerns me. Where neighbors, and I think a neighbor doesn't have to be within four or five hundred feet, and they're not within five hundred feet, they're a little bit more, but. I have people on my street that are a thousand feet away and I think. I I expect them to comply with the code and if not, I think I'd have standing. It's it's the community, it's the immediate area of the community. As far as this administrative stare decisis, it seems to throw that to the wind, because we've held in the past on this and upheld. Other, on other appeals, where they haven't been allowed to do something, and yet, here, because of the. Aggravement issue, we're not. Um, with regard to many of the cases where you refer to cases in here, virtually all of the cases. Are cases that do not deal with the doctrine of standing, that is a judicial doctrine that about seven or eight cases expressly note. It has nothing to do with the underlying administrative ones, which are very, very different, they're different rules of evidence, they're different in every regard. And and open meetings, law, et cetera, um, I think as far as the. A statute of limitations is concerned. I have a problem with that, I think it's legislating, I think it's creating a new requirement, I think that I can rely upon a permit, I don't have to make it my life's work to go to every meeting and everything. I can, the permit should be written so that they mean something, and so I know what they're doing. And if they don't, then I should assume that they're being for a lawful use, I don't have to assume the opposite of the negative. Um. Prior permit was. Not specific, the building permit was not specific, but why for what I assume in any way, shape or form that it was anything unlawful? And the building department said, well, it was a prior non-conforming use, which it was clearly not, I don't think there's any dispute about that. Um, and if it was, it creates a problem, because then they can't have the second dwelling, which was the main house. So I I mean, this is a mess, that's my view, and I don't mean a mess from our standpoint, but this was just, it it seemed like it just. It was like that snowball rolling around, picking up more, um. I think that they should be relegated to making an application for a variance, and any C O has to be restricted, and I have not seen the C O and don't know. So I'm gonna, I'm not in support of this, I think that the the applicants here have, I don't.
Before you continue.
Whatever, I'm not gonna continue, I'm done, thank you.
Greta, uh, just because we talked about this already.
Yeah, I know.
No, 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 I have a different question, Brett, are you gonna vote for this or not? I I'm serious, I asked you that, it's a simple question.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, and I I.
You said, yeah, no, there you go.
I need to, I, we have to, no, because if you're not.
I know what you're, I know what you're.
Right.
Yeah, but I think you get the same result.
You do get the same result, but there's no point in having spent a half hour.
Well, I don't wanna be, no, but I don't know what people are gonna do.
Because we talked about this, when we talked about this two months ago, I mean, I I mean, I think Charlie came to the conclusion that this is what he was gonna do and this is what was gonna be. Approved, but if Greg is not gonna vote for it, then I think the simple, and and I think you're gonna vote for it, Brian.
You mean rather than abstain, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 if, there are only four of us voting, if Brad votes no. And um Dave votes no, and Brian and I vote yes, it fails.
To denial.
It's a denial, so we don't, we don't have a resolution, it's just a deny.
You should do your thing, I mean.
But only if, only if.
But you should do it either way, why wouldn't you? You've got a resolu- I know, so then it gets denied and then the denial accomplishes the same thing, I mean.
Right, but.
It's a deliberative process.
You know, Dave, uh. Dave discussed and brought out many, many good points, I don't think there's anybody on this board. Uh, who doesn't agree that, uh, you know, this is a troubling case. Um. My point of view has been, and still remains, that it's a technical legal issue. It's square one in our village code and state law. That people have to meet a certain uh standard, as they would say, uh, that you have to be aggrieved. In order to bring an appeal. And regardless of how I feel about uh the merits. Of of this case and and a lot of what Dave has been saying. Um, which of course is is very important things, uh, i- in the ends. I also think that, you know, if you don't follow those principles. Then you're inviting the Wild West, somebody could three years later. Uh, say that somebody on the opposite end of town. Uh, uh, put in something. Uh, which wasn't quite right, and and they may be right, but that doesn't mean that they can get relief from it. Or that we even have uh, uh, the, the right to go through it because we are in appellate board. And the person has to be aggrieved. Um. And. I do believe that the resolution focuses on that. I don't believe the resolution focuses on the merits. I believe uh, the resolution focuses simply on uh, really uh, the, the tenants of seven twelve. Um. I don't wanna misquote, but uh. The, the code and the law and, and. Look, that's just my, that's just my read on it. Uh, and, and of course. As passionate as, as you are about the issue, and I completely. Hear you. Uh, I'm passionate about um, making sure. That. We keep things under control, that property owners um, who do things. Don't always have to sit there and think that somebody's gonna come. Uh, after sixty days, after six months, after two years. Uh, you know, from somewhere completely across town. Uh, uh, because that, that's what that would open this up to. So I look, that's just my opinion. Uh, and based on that, I would. Uh, I would vote on this. Uh, based on those merits, cause that's the only thing this is addressing. This is not addressing. Whether or not what was done was right or wrong. Which, you know. Uh, uh, you know. Is uh.
No, thank you. I, I understand you and I respect that position, but I also wanna say that. It's more of a response to say, well. These are the rules that they play by, except. In this instance. This started, if you will, by a failure to comply. That, that's how I see it. So I feel.
That's if you think there's a failure to comply.
If I do, right. Well, I think, I think it's fair to say this with all respect. I think it's very fair to say. It would be hard for me. I think Frank is a nice fellow. He spoke here, the building inspector. I mean, he was talking about prior non-conforming uses. He was talking about this. Come on. I mean, he made an error. I mean, there's, the people, there's nothing wrong with someone making a mistake, you know? It only happens five or six times every minute, but it's fine. But the issue I have is. These people that, you know. Is this how you change a code?
Okay, and here's.
But I, and I understand your point.
Here's where we got to on the last discussion on this.
This is where we got to.
No, no.
No, it's good.
This is another point.
There's another point, and Robin made the point.
I did.
The point is, is that the building department and the current building inspector has the ability to go back. Review the property. And say, this is not in compliance. We do not, because we're in appellate board and we don't have the power to hear something. If it's not brought by somebody who is aggrieved. They're just, they're just not aggrieved, but that doesn't mean.
Given the location of the prop- I'm sorry.
That doesn't mean that now that. You know, this is brought out or that we, uh, we write a recommended, not a recommendation, but. Uh, 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 the, you know, that the, the facts are put to a new building inspector. Um, that they don't have the power to go out, do an inspection, and determine whether or not the building's in compliance.
The appropriate per- I, I, I have been given to understand that the appropriate person to. Complain about a non-compliance with the village code is the code enforcement officer. Who should be notified if someone feels that there is a problem, that somebody is not complying with the village code. That is the appropriate. Individual in the village to whom to make that.
And who do they, who does that person report to? To the building inspector?
I'm sure they do. I don't know the process.
The code enforcement officer. Has. Has the obligation to enforce the state uniform codes, the local codes. So if a complaint is ra- raised directly to the code enforcement officer, the code enforcement division of the building department. Then there's an obligation to make an inspection. There's an obligation to investigate the issue.
Right, and we.
Just as what happened with Mr. Teager, and a complaint was raised, Mr. Teager was subject to an inspection. It's the same thing.
So we're legally put in a position where somebody's trying to have us overrule.
Seeking injunctive relief. And, and you have no authority to grant injunctive relief.
Um, I, I think I'd like to, so, yeah, but I'd like to move on this. We've all said it between this.
We've, we've said it. We've said it on, no, I agree with you.
Let me answer Robin's question so we can move on. Um. Yeah, I mean, we've all given a lot of thought to this. With, with respect to the time bar issue, I totally disagree and um, I will not. You know, um, vote, vote for that. With respect to um, Mr. Teager. I don't believe he's aggrieved. He's in a different residential district. I think that's, he is across town. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Um, with respect to Sue McCory, who's in the same residential district. You know, I'm willing. To. Give an expansive view to. Of agreement for people who live in that same residential district. I don't think. Sue McCory lives across town. From. The residence um, at eight eight six Orianna. I think it's. Much closer, so um. I was gonna say that. You know, have the view that people who live within the same zone of residential district. Arguably are in the same zone of interest. You know, maybe that's not right, but may, maybe it is, but I just. I think it's, you know, you, you wanna keep the door open. As opposed to closing it. Um, and I went back and forth. I came in thinking I was gonna vote. Vote on the agreement. Agreeing with both of you. And I've, I've kind of changed my mind over the course of the hour of discussion.
It, it, I, I will make my statement and then we're gonna, and then I'm gonna quote a question. So, uh, so if everyone else has got to make their statement, I'll say my. Two minutes here. I do not think they are. I agree with Brian. It seems to me that you have to have a standard for agreement. They're three. Sue McCory is three thousand feet away, the same that it happens to be the same residential district designation does not make her a, an interested party or an aggrieved party. Uh, she's far away. She's got the, um, various big buildings between her and various developments. I think one of the, the, um. Uh, there's a school, there's other things between her and this house. I don't think she's within the zone of dis- uh, within the district. Um, and I don't think the fact that she happened to have the same zoning designation is relevant. Uh, so, and I. Think that there's a period at which you have to be able to file your plan, to file an appeal so that someone does have certainty. And yes, you never have certainty because if it was erroneously issued a code, right? You don't, you're not grandfathered to anything that was erroneously issued. But in general, you are entitled to some, um, you know, comfort as to the fact that it hasn't. Um, that a neighbor hasn't challenged it. So, um, uh, based on that, I make a motion to approve this as edited. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Greta.
No.
Dave.
No.
Yeah.
Brian.
Yes.
I vote yes. Angelique, you're abstaining. Abstain. Therefore, this is not granted. Therefore, the rest of the appeal is denied. Okay. Done. Few minutes? Okay, the next one is eight eighty three fourths. Drive, uh, application nineteen eighty twenty-two. Um, so my first comment is the third where S clause says, whereas to facilitate the proposed improvements. You need to say what those proposed improvements are, otherwise this is a. Kind of a meaningless um. A statement. Um, so the proposed improvements. Are. Um. Add a second story with a, add a second story, larger garage room, a family room, a porch. So whereas to facilitate the um. Construct, uh, the um, in, uh, the, in, the, uh, uh, increase in height of the second story. With a larger garage and family room. Um. Then on the second page. The first where as close as. It says in considered comments from members of the public. I don't recall there being any comments from members of the public. So, I mean, this is sort of like boilerplate language, but it's, he said that he put this into every res- application, whether or not there have were any comments. I can't remember on this. Whether there was specific or not. Um, where are you, Robin? Top of page two, the first where.
Okay, I, I apologize. I just wanted to give you a correction for page one. That three point two percent variance is wrong. It's nine point one percent.
The three sixty-eight square feet, you mean?
Yeah, the math was. Like, you know, you did the wrong.
Yeah, I remember the one.
Um, and then we might just wanna, since they're putting the variance up there, we might just wanna put the variance under two and three.
I'm sorry.
So the FAR, the FAR variance is five point nine percent. And the rear yard setback is forty-one percent.
I'm sorry. It says this requires a point twenty-one. Oh, you're seeing the percentage. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. So it's a five, five point nine?
Five point nine percent.
And what is the? But I'm sorry. It's not three point three percent.
No, yeah. He, the person is screwed up math. Though they had it right on the second page or the third page, but they had it drawn. It's nine point one. Percent variance for the three sixty-eight.
Okay, and the rear yard setback.
Right, yeah. And for the FAR, it's five point nine, and for the rear yard, it's forty-one percent.
I mean, it, it, also the rear yard setback. That number three. Uh. Secret rear is seventeen point seven feet, where thirty feet is required. Um. Did we want to say?
Like I said later, now we're just saying the facts. These are the facts.
Well, no, in terms of the facts, I'm, I'm saying, you know, there's a pre-existing non-conforming. Um. Of uh. Eight point six.
But that doesn't go, this is just a simple statement of the setback that they're requiring, that they're, that you're saying, yeah. Then wait, if you wanna say something about the fact that there's an existing non-compliance, I mean. Then we should put a statement about.
In the balancing, yeah, because overall they're only asking for. A, a three percent, uh, three point seven percent, uh, no, a three point seven foot difference. Than what's non-conforming pre-existing.
Oh, then maybe we should add it here. There, there is currently a.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, I thought you had.
No, 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 there's currently in, in eight point six. But non-conforming pre-existing.
Because the rear yard setback is, uh, is currently. Where there's a pre-existing, yeah, something. Okay, so.
Yeah, that's pretty important. Yeah.
Well, no, I, there's, yeah, it, it's not conforming. So it requires twelve point three year setback variance. So. That means that the current setback, if it's only, if it's. If they have an eight point six now. Point six minus thirty feet.
Well, it's still that, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's.
We could say it doesn't.
It's still a forty-one percent variance from the current rule.
Overall, yes. You know, but the, the.
They're not increasing.
The pain is not.
I think maybe it goes better in the second, when we talk about this one.
Yeah, which is fine.
Okay, okay. Then.
Right, yeah, you see, the existing uh, is.
Twenty-one.
Is twenty-one point four, although thirty is required.
Right, they're already, they're already eight, almost nine feet non-compliant.
Correct, so what they're proposing is seventeen point seven, so perhaps later on, yeah, when we do the balancing. Uh, what they're asking for is only three point seven feet more.
Um, so comments from members of the public. I just don't remember whether we had any comments.
No, but I, you, you, in, in those cases, what you say is that it was open for public.
Right, but that. But, but we also say that nobody spoke because it's important to note there were people who spoke, like. Last week, we had member comments on.
Right, we didn't consider that nobody, nobody spoke.
I don't recall, so we should say, um, there would have. But public, you know, nobody from the public spoke. Okay, then, um. The next word, the third where as clause needs a word added, the word two, uh, the, the last line that says, it says, who are directly adjacent. The premises to the premises. Okay.
There's a typo in one.
Yeah, the toe.
It says toe.
The toe adjacent.
Okay.
Oh, wait, but before you get down to the toe adjacent. Um, it says the area variance will not result in an undivisible state because the rear yard of the premises. But there were three variances. This only goes to the rear yard. The other two variances are the building coverage and the FAR. So. We need to say something about that. It's not just the rear. Yard. That's why the, that's the issue of why even though the rear yard is pretty large, it's okay.
So I'll say the area variance will not result in a change in character or, or judgmentary properties, and then period.
Right.
Get rid of because. I'll say the rear yard of the premises does not, but okay, and then we need two more statements in here related to the other two variances.
Right.
Well, now, now, is the only thing that they're building, I gotta refresh my recollection.
They're building a.
Uh, they, aren't they just going straight up?
Yeah, they're going straight up.
But are they going to the sides at all? Because if they're not.
No, I think they would just hold on.
Then maybe it is relevant that, you know, the only. Part of the property which is impacted is the rear. I, I can't remember.
It doesn't matter. They're increasing a lot of coverage. Now the roof deck is here. It's a proposed second floor plan. Proposed first floor. It's future third floor. Oh, they're going up. They're adding a half story on the third floor too. They're going up. Existing first floor plan. Now, they're making, yeah, they're going wider, the side yard. They're increasing the size of the garage. Yeah, they're going out.
Yes, for a while.
They're increasing the size of the garage and the room of the floor above it. Yeah, it's all getting wider. All getting wider. Not just going up. Okay.
Yeah, it definitely adds a lot of volume.
Yeah. So I think we can't. If the rear yard was.
I don't know that they're actually making the uh. The garage wider.
Yeah.
Aren't they just like? In the driveway?
Making it wider?
Yeah, because wasn't there a? Yeah, they're making it big enough for two cars. Before it was a one-car garage. Now it's gonna be a two-car garage.
Yeah, they're replacing. They're replacing the garage with a two-story, a two-car garage.
Right, so they're widening it.
So that, okay, so they're making it wider. They're not making it deeper to go one.
No, I think they're making, no, they're going side by side. They're not putting a tandem garage.
Proposed addition, proposed addition.
Actually, here's the planning plan.
You're widening it. Fifteen feet. You have the survey. How wide is the garage? Does it have the dimension? Doesn't have the dimension.
Yeah, they're, they're, no, I, I, I can see it here. They're definitely widening.
Yeah. So they are doing, so that's going more into the.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're going a couple of feet over.
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, it shows on the pro- on the proposed.
Yeah, if you, if you can, if you compare the existing with the proposed, they're going over a couple of feet.
Yeah.
There for the garage.
I just didn't remember the dimensions.
Yeah. It's just.
Thanks, Brett. As I said, that they were getting, making it larger. So we can't just say they're doing all three things, but it's only the, the other two are fairly small. Building coverage and FAR are larger than. You know, they, they want variances, but they're not significant. It's only the, the, um, rear yard that is a significant variance, which I think we say.
So do you wanna say that the, um.
I would think we should say that the, the, um, increase in lot, I think we should make a statement first. That, oh, no, that goes in the significant one, so it's okay.
We said the rear yard of the premises does not abut any residential property and.
That's enough.
Each one club property.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, then on number two.
Well, do you wanna say in addition, not just that it doesn't abut any rear, um, any, um, residential property, but it's also not close. It's also not close to any um. Building or structure on the other side. There's a lot of open space.
Well, it it actually, it actually says that the two adjacent neighbors. Uh, that would have been impacted have provided letters to the board in support of the area variance.
I'm talking about the rear. The rear, there's like, there's this wide open space.
Yeah.
Is, you know, we might want to add that as a back.
So case, and it's adjacent to the beach. Up point club property, which has lots of open space.
Yeah.
Which is. Isn't that like their parking area and like a?
Not, I'm the map now, and it's. I don't think it's the parking area.
But there was parking area because I remember they told or talked about it.
Yeah, but over there, but not really.
Just say open, uh, uh, not undeveloped. Don't say then we don't know exactly what it is. Let's say.
No, Greta, no, she has it up. So what is it?
It looks like just a roadway.
Roadway.
Yeah, I thought that was where they used to parking, though.
Really? I don't see any parking.
You know, at the aerial?
Yeah, let me see, right here, right here.
Yeah.
Oh, that, oh, that's just.
So what what is that?
We're looking this up.
Yes, I do.
Google Earth.
Yeah.
That might have been a roadway, and then on the other side of the roadway is parking in between the building. That might be their access drive.
The in access drive, it's not a.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Well.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's just a good fact to add.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so then.
So I can say, um, it's adjacent to the beach point club proper property in in. In the area of the existing access drive.
Beachpoint properties.
Access drive. I think, and it's adjacent to the beach point club property on which there is an access drive behind the.
And and the.
A, can you just say beachpoint properties access drive?
Well, but we also want to say it's the whole beach point club property could just be a.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, going to the next one, number two, it says, because no matter where the improvements are made, they would require area variances. For building coverage and F A R, this is just wrong because they don't have to get them. Nothing that says they have to. That the improvements would require area variances for building coverage and F A R since. This implies that you have an automatic right to have improvements, and I kind of don't like it. I mean, I I mean, I don't know. To me, this seems a problem.
What number is it?
Two. Says, the benefits sought cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicants to pursue other than the area variances. Because no matter where the improvements are made, I guess they would require area variances for building coverage. And if, yeah, that's right, if they're gonna put it on. Um, so. But can you achieve it by other methods? They just make it smaller. So it's, I don't think this really is a good.
Well, where are they at their max F A R? I mean, what are they asking?
Yeah, it's very small. They're small.
Thirty, they.
So nine point one percent building coverage and five point nine.
Five percent to thirty eight point two.
Right, so I'm asking, are they currently at their max, and therefore, in order to do any improvement? They'd require a variance.
Well, let's go see. No, I think they're adding a lot.
I know they're adding a lot. I'm just asking if they would be doing anything, making something smaller.
They are. Existing is point, no, they're writing a huge, they could have easily made, put on this much smaller. Um, enlargement. They're going from point two two five F A R to point three seven five. They're adding.
Point three seven five?
Yeah.
Cause they're, the denial was on three, thirty eight points.
Variance is just five point nine percent. That's not a lot.
No, he asked me how much they, could they have done these improvements without exceeding? In other words, they're adding. They're going from twenty nine, twenty five, they're going from almost twenty six hundred square feet to forty three hundred square feet. They're adding a lot. So they were way below the the floor area.
Right, forty, forty one hundred. So so. They could have stopped at the threshold of three point five four. That's why I was asking, I was asking whether or not they were already there.
They could have stopped. And similarly, with with building coverage may not have been the same.
Oh, this is the beach. Oh, was this their house? This is the beach point girl, boy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No, I agree. We've said that already.
I I didn't realize that.
Oh, yeah, that's a good picture.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how you found that.
That's the drive. It says beach point driveway, and that's the house.
So, so so.
Building coverage is not that much.
Yeah, they included it. It's in here.
Yeah. Building coverage is not that much, but the F A R, they could have made a much smaller and large.
Yeah, so you're you're saying that that's not.
So I don't.
Accurate statement. It has to be said differently.
So I don't see, right, I don't think that's an an act, because it's like saying. Yeah.
Then why why don't we say, um. You can say that's. Well. I guess there are three different, you know, there are three different variances, so. Does that apply to?
I see the, your second sentence, um, cannot be achieved by some method. It, so the only reason, the benefits sought by the applicants, if they wanted to enlarge it this much. So, yes, I think the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method. Would have been smaller. So the only, so what we're saying is they wanted to build a really big house, and so we're gonna give them a variance. I mean, there's not really another way of looking at it.
How do we say it in other? In other um resolutions?
We don't, you know, we haven't had this a lot where the people are putting in this much floor area and go going a lot bigger.
Yeah, we didn't.
We don't get that much.
There's a third, there's a third floor here, so that's a lot.
Well, it's, it's the buildings on a, on a.
Right.
On a.
Right.
So it's like a half a floor.
Exactly, on the one side and not on the other side, kind of thing. And then we just, then I guess we acknowledge that. You know.
Because they will, yeah.
They, they, you know.
That's it. Still.
Yeah, they could, um, the benefits sought by the applicant could um be achieved if they scaled down. Their. Their plans for improvements.
Correct, but given, but.
Given the location, given the neighbors.
At, given, given that it's a small increase and it isn't causing any. Negative impact.
But that has to do with the substantiality factor.
But it don't, no, no, but it also goes with this one too. It could be achieved, yeah, you're right. It could be achieved, right, but I don't know that we can.
And that the neighbors all love it.
But you know, we're just balancing factors.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean.
Say, given the fact that they're they're located by.
The applicant could have designed a smaller house, but given that they want to, um. Increase by this much, they would require a a lot coverage, a a building coverage and an F A R variance. I mean.
And given the fact that the neighboring is is.
The rear yard is not an, is one, is not as much, is not a problem. I think that's.
Is it a question of what benefit? So maybe just fix it by saying, the specific benefits sought by the applicant, by the applicant cannot be achieved. Or, you know, without a a area variance.
I.
Because that shows it's their choice. There's the specific benefits they're looking for.
That's a way to do it. But we didn't really ask them. I honestly, we don't usually, do they cons? Maybe, there isn't really an alternative. We didn't ask them, could you have decreased the room by this much or?
No, I don't think.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is that what they were trying to do was they're trying to use the structure of the house. Uh, to do what it lends to do. So they already had this. Room that was sticking out in back of the house. And, uh. You know, with the fireplace, and they were just gonna uh put another room on top of it. Uh, you know. You wouldn't want them to build a completely new garage somewhere, so they just added on to the current garage.
Right, they didn't have to add on to. The point is, they didn't have to add a third story all over. They could have, for example, only put it on. Um, didn't have to put a second, you know what I'm saying? They don't have, why they just because they wanted.
Well, no, it's the specific benefits to meet the needs of the family. In in terms of the garage, they did say. It helps keep the car off the road.
That's only one, that's only one, that's really not a problem. That's not the issue. The issue isn't that they're doing this. The issue is that they're putting all of this additional floor area.
So, is that, does that trouble you or is that? What up?
It doesn't really trouble me in the sense that I know we, we, you know, I didn't really focus on it. Um, and I don't want to say, the, my only problem was saying that the benefit can't be achieved by some other method because we're saying they want to build a big house, and so they have a right to build a bigger house. It kind of looks like that's what it's saying. And I just want to be.
Well, but I think they're in an area that makes it. It's not. Was to get the shop building across the street. There's a. Workshop is right across the street from them.
So I think Brian's ant solution might be the right, the specific benefits sought by this alteration, right? That's what they're do, by this enlargement. Maybe that's it. The specific benefits sought by this enlargement. Right? They couldn't put all that floor area in in any better way.
Okay.
Right, because the structure lends.
Well, that's actually good template language for the future.
Uh, but. The specific benefits sought by the. Uh, sought by this enlargement. Cannot be achieved by the applicant. By some other method. Okay, I think that's just it not because no matter, um. Because you can't say, no matter where the improvements are made, they would require area variances for building coverage. Maybe they wouldn't if they. Went up a floor higher, they wouldn't need building coverage, because they'd just be going up. They might need a different variance, but they wouldn't need building coverage. And if they are, who knows? Maybe they they did a little differently. They could do it smaller. And it would look good, so, um. Okay. All right, and the area variance is relating to the building coverage and not substantial, right? Okay. And then on four, it says further, the two most impacted property owners.
Should be have.
You have, it should be have, but the two, nay, I think we need to make a clear.
Most potentially. You know, the the two most. The two property owners, but with the greatest potential.
Greatest, okay.
Impact. The two neighbors, make it clear for that they're the neighbor. The neighboring properties.
Yep.
Contiguous or or?
Yeah, they both continue, they're contiguous.
Right, so you could use that. Properties.
The owners of the contiguous properties have submitted correspondence. Yeah, that we can. Okay.
The most impacted?
I just don't like the language of most impacted.
Right.
Not good English.
Backdoor.
We can say the two neigh- um, neighboring property owners. Have submitted correspondence in support of the area variance.
Yeah.
Right, I I like. Um, well, contiguous just because it means they share a property line.
Yes, so say, yes, they say that.
I, and that's. I think that's a distinct, to distinct, because, uh.
Adjacent? I think contiguous is good.
Okay.
Just like the word.
I know, but I don't know why, but I think.
Good to be an English teacher.
That's my problem. But the contiguous is good because they are contiguous. Great. Now we're gonna get into dimensions of whether they're contiguous versus adjacent. Um. Pride of authorship, no, no problem. And then we have another grading of these area variances. And the last number four. Down below.
Open the potato something.
Grading. You gonna grade them or are you gonna grant them? We lost Dave. Greta. Anything more on this?
I don't. Um. No, I mean, I guess you'll. Yeah, no- nothing more. Well, you got the, you got the granting?
Yeah, we got the grading.
Okay, definitely.
And the two.
Okay, um.
Can we move?
Somebody make a motion.
I'll move.
One second.
Okay, to adopt it as edited. All right. Um, Greta.
I.
Dave.
Hi.
Brian.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, and and the lead is abstaining.
Okay. So I think we have one, um. Group of applicants who've been very patient, Robin.
Get there. Four one six.
Now, so they come down to.
All right, that's it. It's remaining to be four. All right, the last item on the agenda is four sixteen waiver late. Okay. I, since we only got the revised, um. Edited. Corrected, whatever you want to call it, S E I S today. I did not have a chance to read all of it, but I will say that the couple of things I read, I am, I'm not happy with all of the changes. I think my concern that I expressed last time. About there being too much subjectiveness, which is not a word, but subjectivity in this was not resolved. There's still too much subjectivity in this. Um, even the two chapters that I read. This morning, you know, this afternoon. Um, so if I pull out my notes. From. The in here, most recent, I didn't, this. Um, these are my comments. On, that we went through last week.
I don't see you. Is it there?
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Um, so I don't know if anyone else had a chance to go through them or has any comments.
Well, I I have a chance.
I.
This is, I see it.
I quickly went through the the red lines just from between last week and this week because I specifically asked Ashley for. Just those red lines, um. You know, I I really didn't see that, uh. That much. I did see, uh, you know, the corrections that we had made. They they did seem to be in accordance with. Uh, what we had said last week. I will say that there's a typo. Uh. Ashley, in flooding.
Okay. I can pull the chapters up. Just give me a second. On the screen.
Ashley, do you want to share?
Yeah, I'll I'll do the sharing so I can do like what we did last time.
Okay.
Not a earth-shattering thing. It's just. There's just a typo.
Okay.
Uh, it's, uh. What is it, uh? You know, section D dash, it's, it's under D seven. Under D seven, uh, they were talking about flooding, uh, like riverine. Flooding.
Should be riverine.
Should have been, should have been riverine.
Okay, okay.
So, as I say, I didn't have a chance to go through everything. I went through the economic and fiscal and the visual research. Those are the two I kind of. For whatever reason, looked at, but, um, can you go, can you pull up? Zoning and land use. I wanted to see what you did and see.
Um, zoning and land use is up.
You enlarge that a little, sorry?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Go down to one, I don't need, so try to, I thought you'd find some red lines. Those numbers, I'm not worried about that.
Maybe there weren't any of them, so they're. Taking out is fine. Hey, yeah, that's all fine.
This chapter, um. We did, I did send it to Charlie, and this. This does include his revisions about segmentation, uh. In this section right here.
Now, I'm not seeing any of this. Where do I see, where do you get the red?
The email that to us.
Also, the.
Actually emailed it to us or Brittany emailed it to us.
Okay.
Right, and then when you try to open it in the email, it doesn't show the red line.
Yeah, I just downloaded.
You have to download it into.
But it's all posted to Novus as well. I posted everything this afternoon.
I don't, I'm on Novus, and I don't see the red line.
All the last items. Last several that were uploaded today.
Yeah. I don't, I don't see them as. Roadlined.
What is?
See, I see, it's blue lined online. Okay.
Which is it? Which which one?
It's. I think all of them, just. But you don't, it's not, it's not, it's hard to see.
Just the one up there, that's the.
That's A.
A.
Okay.
Zone it, right, yeah.
Right, with the segmentation is the big thing.
So.
Can you go down to? Oh, eight twelve, go up to eight twelve, to the response that we had some. Oh, that's what you were just reading, right, that you were saying?
Yeah, this is a section that the Charlie revised. Are there any further?
Yeah, I'm trying to read it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I don't really like it, not specifically bound by precedent, that doesn't seem right.
This should just be not bound by.
It's not right, not 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 specifically bound by precedent.
Is it specifically written there? This is different.
This is random there, the zoning board is not specifically bound by precedent, but that's the.
They say precedent is not an issue in the zoning board's determination.
It has, you can't say, you can say.
So you ju- you want me to delete specifically?
It's just wrong, because this first sentence is just wrong.
Yeah, it was bound by precedent.
We are bound by precedent.
Except recognizing the difference in the factual setting.
Exactly. It should say the zoning board is bound by precedent solely to the, in the determination of area variance request, to the extent that the facts are identical.
Exactly, right. But all, but yeah. Or it's only bound by precedent, right, only bound by precedent.
In the determination of an area variance request, to the extent that the facts are identical.
Facts and.
Related facts and related impacts?
Just fact as part of fact. I don't think this. The ZBA acknowledges that any determination of this project may not be up.
You don't need to say all of that, you could you could say, therefore, therefore, future projects seeking similar air variances will be judged sep- you know, will be judged independently.
Right.
That makes most of that. Say that. Therefore, come a future projects seeking similar variances or you could think they got area. Will be judged, will be independently reviewed.
And to the extent that the facts are the same.
Well, no, you don't even go there, do you? You can say will be independently reviewed and and.
Case by case basis.
By case basis, right, yeah.
Under the applicable statutory.
Under the applicable statutory.
Criteria, and then you set forth the criteria. And but I think you could, no, no, I think you could say um, could leave in to the extent there are distinguishing factors.
Factors, well, I don't think we need to say that. Take it out, right.
The zoning board must apply.
It's fine.
Because you just used the word criteria.
Yeah, the criteria.
Perfect.
They boys standards, criteria, stand whatever, right?
To each individual application, yep, that's fine.
Yeah, that's cool. Are you getting yours marked there?
No, this is marked by too long. I don't know why.
Can you go to A sixteen? Alright, that was the sound right of any changes. Okay, that's fine.
Right.
That's fine.
I believe my A sixteen.
Go to um page eight twenty one. No response, eight twenty one, yeah. Okay, you took out.
Right, all the human scales came out, all the. All the FEIS uh was put in where it should have been where it was not.
I would say I couldn't, I just didn't have a chance to see.
No, I know, it came in, you know.
So late.
Even late.
Yeah.
Better than not being ready at all.
Okay, I didn't have anything else on this.
It, you know what? Before you go, there's a grammatical error there. Okay, go ahead.
The height has also been reduced. What line?
First sent- first sentence in the next paragraph down for that response.
Proportions.
Has also been reduced, the height has been, thank you, English teacher. Thanks, sorry.
No, it's fine, okay.
We like English.
I didn't have anything on B, obviously, C, you pull up C and maybe I don't, oh no, I didn't, oh yeah, I have something on. I just wanna see what you give us.
We'll just make sure I don't lose that. Alright, so you said skip B and we wanna pull up.
C, I mean, unless anyone else does, but from my perspective, pull up C.
Yeah, C had the most changes.
Yeah, go to C nine.
So the big thing here was clarifying that they are required to have a sub slab depressurization system and or vapor barrier. And so that was clarified consistently throughout the document.
Thing about nine, that was nine was one of those things too.
Few places.
But yeah, it starts on C six. Again, on C seven, where explains why.
Right.
More. Again, on C nine, and so as we get further in the document, it refers back to C seven, because that's where there's the most detailed information description.
Okay.
And then C twelve.
Was anything?
Right.
Uh, C fourteen.
Why is it red instead of blue? Oh, I can't, there's no.
This one was a different person who maybe had it. Oh, uh, this, and uh.
Yes, okay.
I don't know why it did that. I I did go back and double check. This is actually an edit that did appear in the previous version, but it was something that was moved. So I think that's why it showed up as red, because I did a compare doc.
Get rid of the S and recommends, please.
Sure.
Sixteen, what do I have? Oh, that was still C sixteen, right? A geotechnical.
Right.
That was, yeah, that was discussed at the last meeting.
Yep, that was, okay. Okay. You go to D.
Situation. Where we discussed them.
You talked about that, right, yeah, yeah, that they're automatic, right, they're automatic, yeah.
Well, automatic without the need for electricity.
Yes, so, yes, so specifically says.
Yeah.
Right. Everybody's always referring to them. I I saw recently the flood case that they're putting in Manhattan.
Oh, see, there's the river ring.
Oh, there is, there's rivering.
Oh, you know what, it's, well, it's the it was the stenographer that spelled it wrong. Because this came right out of the the um right out of the transcript.
The floodgates in Manhattan, right, the ones that they're putting up.
Because you stopped back.
Where do you practice, locally or in the city?
Well, stop for a second, Ashley, I'm trying to read what you.
Yeah, from there. So this is the um diagram that we showed on the screen at the last meeting, and so now there's an, just an edit here.
Right, you added that, right, that diagram?
Yeah, so the ad- so the diagram's in the document, and this is where it can be found in in six K. That's the end of that chapter.
No, that was D.
That was. We're going through, sorry, D E, well, I don't know what he is, but I don't have a printed.
Yeah, we didn't have any comments on E from the last meeting, so the next one is is F, visual.
Right. Okay, a- and some of these comments I may not have said last time, but they're all of a of a thing with this is our document and nothing should be subjective. Okay, so in F one, go to uh go to visual.
Okay, oh, um, sorry, it's up, it, me just, not sharing the right file, I'm sorry. You should see it now.
Okay, so going down to F one, so it says to provide the high level of service. I don't know that they provide a high level of service, we're not saying they provide a high level of service. I think we need to, it needs to say something like um, to continue providing its service. Right, something like that, I don't know, whatever it was.
Or just say to to provide its service.
And then it says that Murphy Brothers Contracting has evolved, I think it could just be, has become a construction management business. Not is become, because it has become. Murphy Brothers Con- Construct- Contracting has become a construction.
You could just say is a. Management business.
Today, Murphy Brothers Construction is. Oh, yeah, that's fine, yes, that's fine, okay. We took all the human scales that I saw. Now, in the next one, it just says the buildings, uh, we we, no, no, right where you were. It's the first sentence there, the buildings most notably following the infamous March two thousand seven floods. We could leave it in if everyone's okay with infamous, some reason, I didn't know what else, but.
Or you could just take it, or you could just take it out.
Yeah, I could, take out infamous.
Notorious.
Disastrous. Sounds like it was.
Yeah, this doesn't have the right, okay.
It was notable.
It was notable. So you can leave it in, I don't care.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just.
I know, but Brian also says.
I'm just running.
I'm just trying to say. They were trying to put in the.
Significant.
Oh, you know.
You don't like to, it's, you don't wanna use significant in an EIS unless you're talking about a significant.
Okay, fine, then leave it as just the mark.
Potentially significant.
Anything else on that paragraph?
Should I scroll down? Yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Sorry, I'm trying to look at my notes at the same time as.
Right, I was only looking at the changes.
Right, that's why I have here my notes that I had last time, trying to.
Right.
Put them together. Okay, F six, go down to F six. Yeah, the response.
Just hard to forget him.
That's okay.
So this is.
Express by the applicant, that's the applicant, so that's fine. Okay, now, wait, sorry, um, F seven. Okay. That was good, right? Okay, um. I don't know, we talked about that. Keep scrolling down. Go down to F thirteen, I'm looking at what this is, I didn't figure out what this is.
Um, there's no F thirteen.
And we took it out, right, when there had been enough. Yes. Physical condition, right? Okay. Do anything else? Okay. H, we had nothing, I think. I don't know what G is.
What are your comments on G? Minor edit in H.
Okay.
And then there's some stuff in I.
Yeah, I had, I is where I found some other stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
I was one.
Yeah, economic and fiscal analysis.
It's up.
Okay, go down to, alright, keep scrolling down. Okay. Um, so it says there are many reasons, they, these reasons vary. Um, so it says there are many reasons. They these reasons vary include, it's not vary from, it could be many others. So these reasons includes. Right, because I don't know that implies that's all there is, and I don't know that that's right. Okay, then, when people choose. Where people choose to rest, you're missing one thing there, which is cost. And the cost. And the cost needs to be included there. Now, I three. I do this big one. The Maranex self storage is serving the community storage and take out the words satisfy. Um, do we want it? Now, the last line of I three says, also, the Murphy Brothers contracting business will benefit from having a new modern office space. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Their site, I think that's a true state.
I think it's a true statement, but I don't have the business.
We said that they believe they will benefit.
Okay, believe they will benefit. I think that's right. We don't know that they will actually be. We don't know if their business will do better.
Well, listen, I think that they're going to benefit because for health and safety reasons, their current buildings are not flood compliant, and I do think that they're going to.
Yeah, and that way they will, yeah.
They will. They absolutely will.
Okay, so rather than being an impact, an adverse impact, it's actually a benefit.
Well, I was thinking benefit in terms of business, like they do more business, but you're thinking of it in a different way.
I I am.
You're right, and that's the way you you're thinking of it is fine. I would had a different. Well, words don't tell, say what it is, so it's.
Oh, you could, you could, well, you could say will will benefit by having a new flood compliant.
Office space.
Office.
Yeah, make it flood compliant instead of modern. Okay. All right, I five. Sort of a little for that says, the only things within walking distance are two delis on Fenimore Road and their Mexican cafe, all of which we recommend. Take out the all of which we recommend. We're not recommending anything. And take out the thing that says we also give recommendations for restaurants. I mean, take all that out.
Well, I think the reason why they put that in there.
We're not, this is ours. We're not recommending. We don't know if you want to say that the they recommended the applicant recs and tells us that it recommends these things. That's fine, but I'm not sure it adds anything.
Well, I I think that there was a question in terms of, you know, when this was thought of in comparison with the maker's own to, you know.
But I think it's clear, the only things within walking distance are two delis, and that's correct statement. I think that tells you everything, the fact they recommend them or don't recommend them.
No, they're saying they give recommendations to the.
But that's not really relevant to to the issue here.
I was trying to figure out why it was in there first of all.
Because they can say they're nice people.
Um, if I if I could just interject, I think it was to show that they are supporting the local businesses in the surrounding area, because this is the economics and fiscal section of the BIS. So they're trying to show to to your point, Brian, about the maker's own and supporting the area. That's exactly what they're doing with their customers to further that.
Right, that it would bring more people, could possibly bring more patrons into the merit to the Maranick businesses.
So you probably can get rid of the only thing within walking distance or two delis in Fenimore Road, because if you're taking out the recommendation part of it, it doesn't make sense to even have that in this. No, I think they're trying, I think it makes sense to have it in this paragraph, because they're trying to say it's not really relevant, the, you know, the the maker's own wants all of this walking distance, but in fact, there's nothing walking distance. But I think it is relevant in this paragraph. Okay.
Sure. I mean, the 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 comment was that, can you go back to the combination?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they're trying to respond to the fact that, look, people are going to come in, drop their stuff off, get out, and they're saying. Um, you know, there's two restaurants right nearby, and we're going to disseminate information.
I don't think that's relevant that they disseminate information, honestly. To me, I mean, I really don't.
But I think the point they were trying to make is that some of their customers are from out of state, and they do, they are there for a period of time after unloading trucks, and they may want to get a bite to eat before they go home. I think that was.
So then maybe we should add a sentence that says. I mean, they're not that far. They're a close, it's a close drive to Maranick Avenue Restaurants. Maybe put that in. So and so the instead of saying the only things within walking distance.
The proximity to the downtown business.
Right.
District, uh, because it's not just restaurants, it's it's everything is there. They have retail.
Right. Well, this just says go to where to go to get a bite of weetabix bottle of water. That's why I was talking about the restaurants, because that follows that.
Yeah, it 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 follows that, but if that's at, but if this is our document and we're trying to answer this question. Sure. And, uh.
It's sort of a negative, the only things within walking distance, you know what I mean, like.
No, I don't, I I I don't disagree with you that those those should be, uh, that that line could be taken out. That doesn't.
Fine, just take it out. It's, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know that our goal is to help anything. Call us to make an independent. We shouldn't be trying to help somebody or not help somebody.
Well, it's not a matter of helping. It's a matter of of us looking at this and balancing and and making judgments, and the truth is, is that, as was just said. Uh, they are proximate to the to the business district. They are going to have some clients that are from out of town, uh, and it could possibly. Uh, bring business to our downtown.
Is that the negative comment is that there's no incentive for the clients who come there to that facility to stick around.
But I don't know that Manhattan Maranick Business District is in the neighborhood. Depends on what you mean by neighborhood. It's not that far, but I'm not sure it's the same neighborhood.
We could walk though.
Well.
It just sounds a lot to say there's only.
Well, then the the thing is, is that nobody's coming to this self-storage place without a vehicle.
Yeah, I think.
And it's, it's. Right, and it's, it's, uh. It's just a a matter of blocks. It's a couple of blocks.
All right, so how how about this revision, um, it's on the screen now.
Nice. See restaurant or retail uses with.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay. And take out the only things.
And then take out the.
Right, take out, yeah, take out the delis.
That's fine.
Even though they're highly recommended.
You could all use the deli right now.
Okay, I don't think I'm tired. I think that was it. I didn't have anything else, I don't think, or most given that I didn't have a customer meeting even now. I think that's it. So now we have to go to the resolutions. So we'll just have to change the words. So subject to these changes that we discussed today.
The whereas is, um, are really just the same, so. It's really the.
No, no, I got some comments on here, even on the whereas is. Which is a question. So the third whereas clause. And this is a question for you or Ashley. The ZBA conducted a co- a coordinated review and declared itself to be lead agent. Didn't it declare itself to be lead agency before it conducted the coordinated review? Is it the opposite? What? Yes. The word word is the opposite, whereas the ZBA declared itself to to be a lead agency and conducted a coordinated review.
Yes, that would be accurate.
Then that's what we should say. And then of various places in this, it says the East Coast, and it's just East Coast. And that's what their name is under this. That's a few places, so you just should. Roy, you just have to go through it. It's in a few places, too.
So it's just in the second whereas.
But it's in a few other places.
I know, but on the first page.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the second whereas. But we got it.
Okay, um, now. The, um. The next to last whereas says, the East Coast submitted a revised addressing the January seven, addressing all of these comments from the ZBA Village Engineer and ZBA Consulting. But we've never said that there were comments on January, oh, I see, there's January seventeen. We never said anything about January seventeen. Or February fourth, we have February, so all these dates, we've never said there were comments or who gave them. I think there should be an affirmative statement, whereas who gave, otherwise, you've got, it says, the ZBA considered a special meeting in January twenty first, so we have comments that. Then there was a work session February sixth, so there were comments then. Then. It says addressing the comments, but wh- which comments? What com- what comments were in January seventeen? What comments were on February fourth? What comments were on February seventh? And what happened to the February sixth comments? They've disappeared, so. This kind of these dates and the relation needs, there's got to be somehow, this has to be straightened out.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't even know where you are.
La- next to last.
On the first page.
Next to last, whereas on the first page.
Okay.
It says on or about October twentieth, East Coast submitted a revised DAS addressing all these comments, but it's 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 their specific.
I actually think we could take all of those out and just everything that's before the DEIS was accepted as complete. I think you could delete all of it and just put in the date of when the DEIS was accepted as complete.
Fine. Lori, does that work for you?
It works for me.
That's fine with me. I don't care. So we're taking everything out really to. Like, all of this is.
Like, the middle of page two.
Okay. There's another button post in the middle of page two.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, but you're starting with whereas on February fourth, the ZBA deemed the DEIS complete. I guess you do have to make one statement, whereas they. There were multiple, I don't know, something about they were.
Oh, you don't even have to, because it was, it was accepted as complete, and all of that is already documented in the previous resolution.
Okay, so then, so so if we're starting with whereas on February fourth, we deem it complete.
Where is the?
Middle.
Middle of here.
Yeah. That's what you're talking about, as it with my, with the condition that the minor revisions detailed in the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one memo, but we need to say there was a January twenty twenty. We somehow you need to explain what the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one memo is. If we're saying it's complete, subject to these comments, so we have to, you have to, uh, with, so you, I guess you could say with the condition that the minor revisions detailed in a January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one memorandum from the ZBA consultant. That solves your problem.
Well, yeah, just I have to, I have to move the defined term ZBA consultant down. And redefine it, because we're, you're saying to take out that all of the one, two, three.
Four.
Five, whereas is on page two.
And also the whereas is a lot of the whereas is on page, the end of the whereas is on page one.
Yes, but yes.
Yeah, yeah.
The defined term is, we're we're saying whereas on page one, the the one, two, three, four, five, six, whereas, whereas on December thirtieth, East Coast submitted a draft DAS to ZBA as consultants for initial review and comment on.
Right.
And whereas on February fourth, the ZBA deemed the DAS complete.
Right.
After a series of subsequent meetings to address.
Okay.
Okay. After.
Yeah, the one with the drafts.
Oh, mine does. Oh, good, yes.
Okay.
I started reading the other one.
All right, and then I'll define the AKRF and here and after ZBA's consultant in that same paragraph.
Right.
About the January twenty eighth memo.
Right. Okay, then, on. The next page. Sort of like one, two, three, four, five from the bottom. It's got May thirty first, twenty twenty one. That should be twenty twenty two. Oh, wait.
Are you that?
And can I just clarify that, um, Mr. Kellard of Kellard Sessions. Here and after the village engineer provided just that single memorandum.
Yes, he he did with the project. There were some modifications that had to coverage.
Okay, so it was just one, all right. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that there were other.
Good question.
There were on the DEIS, but not for the FEI.
Because because it, um, in in Charlie's draft, he defines village engineer, and then I don't see that comes up again, so I probably can take out that here and after village engineer. But it's not anywhere else. Okay. Thank you. A lot of videos to get through, so.
Okay. Do either of you got it, Greta or Dave?
No, I mean. I mean, I didn't have a chance to look at.
We're looking some of it now. I didn't look at some of it before. We're looking at it now on screen.
I just got the, I just got his draft this morning, so I got it over as soon as I could.
Okay, um, then. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? On the final EIS.
As revised.
As re- as to be revised after today, so it's got to be revised in accordance with our comments today.
The date?
January fifth, it says January. Oh, twenty twenty three. I noticed, um, on the bottom here, just just, I I guess, I mean, Charlie did it, and you just copied, but, um. It should always be in alphabetical order, so it should be Brian, Greta, Dave, Angelique on the listing of the. Board members. It wasn't done in alphabetical. I'm just saying it should be the board member's name should be in alphabetical order at the bottom. Right, Brian, Greta, Dave, Angelique.
That should be true for all of the. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
So I'll do a motion.
Would say you make the motion, right?
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Dave, seconded it. Um, any discussion or let's vote?
No, wait.
Okay, Brian.
Yes.
Greta. Dave. I vote yes as well. Angelique, you are abstaining, correct?
No, no, if you want to vote on it.
I was listed, I think, because I heard the went through the draft last time, so yes.
You want to vote on it? You're you're welcome to. Oh, if you're thinking you, oh, so yes, so you vote yes as well? Okay. Sorry, I just. All right, so we have, it has been approved as revised.
Now, what is the next step?
So the next step is Lori and or AKRF is going to prepare a finding statement?
Yes, we'll coordinate on that, um, and we plan to submit the draft finding statement to the ZBA approximately two weeks before your February meeting, so you have time to review it and send us any comments in advance of that meeting.
Okay. Okay.
The board, I think, uh, there was a notice that was circulated as well, very.
We didn't see.
Yeah, it's got to go on the. Very late.
Very, it's very, very clean.
Right.
I'll pull it up on the screen. It was, um, it was attached to the same. Email as the draft chapters. It's a.
It's a pretty standard form, so.
Yes, it's just the DEC's form.
Yeah.
Basically, it, it goes out.
Hold up.
All of the involved and interested agencies.
It's fill in.
It's just loading, sorry. It'll pull up and just, all right, now you should be able to see it. Um, it goes out to all of the involved and interested agencies notifying them that the FEIS has been completed. Um, it has a very brief description of the project.
Too quick.
Can you go down to the description?
Yeah, let's.
It's from the, it's actually taken from the packet of summary in your, in your documents.
Yes.
Almost it's verbatim from. Secret document.
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing. We did receive this, did, or not?
You did, yes. It was attached to the same email as the draft chapters.
It's like a series.
Any edits to the section or should I continue scrolling?
Well, it says. It says the project involves the demolition of all existing structures on the property.
Except it doesn't, except because the.
Except for the existing.
Okay, okay. That's the exception. Okay.
It's literally the, the project description that's.
Right, well, like, we could have missed that too, it's in the summary.
Your DEIS.
Okay.
Hey. Yeah, it has the address. And then this just. Very high level, it's basically the subject headings of each of the chapters of the DEIS. These are all the analysis areas.
From the scoping, yep.
From the scoping document, yeah.
Okay.
Um. And then this is where.
They get it.
A copy.
Okay.
And this will get, um, also published in the environmental notice vault.
A substantive question or a non-substantive question, can, do we get a copy of a final, of the, of the final EIS? When we have thousand.
So, so what happens now is, you know, we have all the revisions, um. I will be sending all of the revised chapters as you accepted them back to the applicant's consultant team. They will put everything together in a PDF for the board. They will be responsible for publishing the document, uh, creating any of the hard copies that are necessary. And mailing it out to all of the agencies that may require it. All the involved and interested agencies.
Um, and we would like an applicant to make sure that we have one hard copy, not as the appendix. I understand, of the FEIS for all the board members. I'm assuming everybody wants a hard copy. Yes?
I mean, I think.
If not.
Maybe I'll take the, you know, to save. I can take the.
Save the trees.
Yeah, save the tree.
I'll, I'll look at it online.
I'm not going to, I want a hard copy.
Okay, so, so how many hard copy?
Maybe it's just me.
Of just the FEIS, no appendix.
I don't.
I'll take one.
I don't need, oh, you want a hard copy?
Yeah, not, if you're going to, not the appendix.
Not the appendices, just, I mean, the appendices will have. Online or in a, in a, you know, uh, whatever, but.
Our office needs a hard copy, Ashley and Laurie Lee?
Yes.
Okay, so we need one, and I did post that document you just showed, but I'm not, I don't need to do anything with it other than posting it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, it. For the next meeting, uh, after you. Close this notice, are there comments that come in?
No, so there's a, there's a ten day waiting period from the date that the FEIS is filed, so typically the filing date is the date that. The village has a hard copy in its possession and it's up on the village's website. Um. And so then, ten days from that filing date is when you can first have the ability to adopt your statement of findings. Um, presumably, since there aren't any additional revisions that need to happen, it just needs to be packaged and sent out. Um, should be able to turn this around sometime next week, which would give plenty of time for adopting the finding statement at the first meeting in February.
Do you know the purpose behind the waiting period?
It's to provide the opportunity for the interested involved agencies and the public to make comments. There's no obligation. For the comments to be addressed, but you have to provide the opportunity for comments to be received.
Right, so that, that's what my question was. So is that something that we need to consider at the next meeting that there, you know, could possibly be comments coming in on this?
You can acknowledge receipt of them, but there's no, again, there's no obligation to address them or, or to incorporate them or.
Yeah, I thought that that, yeah.
Usually if this, if a really substantive comment comes in from an involved agency, you would try to address it somehow in the finding statement. As opposed to going back and requiring some kind of revision to the FEIS.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, and if you.
Be clear as to what.
Yeah. If you get a substantive comment, then generally the planning consultant provides a tech, something called a tech memo. It's not called that, but. It's generally known as a tech memo, and then if it rises to the level. Questioning a sudden need for a supplement, then you make a determination on that, but that's a really rare occasion with a document that's, um, this. This in depth and so well, you know, you, you have evidence that you. Entertain revisions and make comments, and the project is actually evolved, which is really the purpose of secret to begin with, so. Kudos to all of you for, for taking the time and going through this. I know it's been a long. A long process. I think four years ago when I sat with this board, I think. The initial application arrived, so I have a lot of fond memories of this, but. Kudos and AKRF, it's really did a very fine job of this. Thank you, AKRF. Thank you, AKRF, I didn't.
Oh, you're welcome.
Job, Ashley.
The applicant's document. I mean, I mean, they were the primary authors. We're, we just. Got it ready for the ZBA.
That's what we care about.
So will you also be looking for a draft resolution to? To adopt some findings, to approve the findings and.
Isn't one thing, are there two different things? Is the resolution, is the finding statement not in the form of resolution?
No, the finding, the finding statement.
We need both.
Yeah, so then if you're, if you're going to be reviewing that, you might want to proceed to adopt those and then your role. In reviewing this under secret will be complete, and then all the involved agencies had, then have an opportunity to proceed. With their own findings and take actions based upon them.
Okay, so yes, if we need a resolution, please draft the resolution.
And then when does it come back to us for the actual variances?
You can start right away on the actual variances.
I have to refile because the prior ones were. I still have their application that they filed for this.
You do too.
Sitting in my house.
Okay.
I pulled the file this afternoon, pulled it out, yeah.
I didn't.
But it's a, it's a different project, so.
Right, they're going to have to refile it.
And then because you've completed seeker, now you can proceed to take action.
Okay, um. Uh, any, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody agree to adjourn? All right, the motion is agreed, is agreed. Um, we are. I'm tired. Uh, we are adjourned. Have a good month. See you all next month. Not next week? See now, when you counted, I got it right. Not, not next week?
Good night, everybody.
We were going so quick.